Counselor.
All right, it is just after three o'clock on Tuesday, September 20th, 2022, and we're going to continue our strategic planning session, and so we're going to welcome you all once again to help get us started.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor. We're at it again. Part three. So because, I guess this is televised, we're going to do a quick reboot for anyone that might be watching for the first time with respect to what we're working on. And so if you want to go ahead, Harrison, just to refresh, this is a strategic planning process. The city has had a strategic plan for many years, so this is not new or unusual. I think what is different this time, and you had engaged EC-COG, the East Central Iowa Council of Governments, to really look at expanding your timeframe out from a two-year strategic plan to a five-year strategic plan. And with respect to that, we kind of built in some additional components to the plan with respect to vision and strategies. And so we've been in this process since March, when we started with individual interviews with the council members. We've had a couple of more intensive idea generation sessions with both the council and staff. And then starting in August, we gave you a bunch of wonderful action items that we had in a booklet here, and you did some initial prioritization. And now we're coming, we came together on September 8th to kind of try and funnel those ideas down even further, but didn't quite make it through all of our segments. And so we're back together today to hopefully wrap up that portion of the process. And we may, it sounds like need to, once we've finished our work today, our goal would be to get all of the changes into the plan. We'll send it back to staff. There'll be a few things that they will need to put in with respect to more specific timelines and champions, but then to get that plan back out to you, so then you can see it sort of all together at once. And it may be necessary to come together one more time and just do the kind of final set of refinements to make sure that once you see it in its grand state, that it still feels realistic and on track with where you want to be. So for today, quick reboot, we'll dig into economy and then safety and well-being, and then start the resources section, which has largely been drafted by staff, but we're, they're seeking your input as well into that component of the plan. And then hopefully, we'll have a little bit of time to talk about next steps and how you want to track your progress. I show this as, I was thinking that we would wrap up at five, but it seems like we're going to wrap up, need to wrap up maybe a little bit earlier than that to give you an adequate break before you start your next section. Would that be accurate?
It would be appreciated.
It sounds like you have a busy night ahead of you. So again, this is the strategy map that we've been working off of. The components of the strategy map were really components that existed for the most part in previous strategic plans. They've just been organized differently. On the left-hand side, we have our values, partnerships and engagement, climate action, racial equity, social justice and human rights. And these are the values that are really guiding the plan, as well as kind of the desired outcomes that you're working towards. Then you have the impact areas, which are represented in that blue box. And that's really how you intend to, the areas in which you intend to impact your community, kind of reflecting the unique mission that the city has. And there we had housing, neighborhoods, mobility, economy, safety and well-being. And then the last portion kind of at the bottom were the resources needed to execute the strategy. And there you see facilities, equipment and technology, people and financial. And so we had, we have specific terms that we're using within the plan. We talk about vision, what's that end picture of what we're trying to work towards? And we've already largely made the edits that we wanted to make to the vision for each of the planned components. We had our general strategies of how we wanted to work towards that vision. And then we had the action steps, which is really our, was the focus of our work during the last session, as well as what we'll do here today. And that's really the to-do list. You know, what are the specific items we want to tackle that we can check off a list to help us advance the strategies that are going to get us to this vision? And we talked about putting our action steps into two phases. Phase one would be action steps that we want to be completed this fiscal year or in fiscal year '24 or '25, and then action steps two being items that would be completed in fiscal years '26 through '28. We had also, oops, I might just back up for a moment. We had also suggested that you focus, with respect to the strategic plan, that you focus the action steps on things that are going to require significant human or financial resources, things that are highly visible or have a high impact, things that might require a large degree of collaboration, either within the city itself, or between the city and other organizations, or lastly, things that are just going to take up a lot of council time or community involvement. So in terms of all the ideas we gave you to prioritize, we tried to capture most of the ideas that were generated during the brainstorm session. And there may be great ideas in there that may end up being executed, but they may not rise to the level that we want to actually potentially call them out on the strategic plan. Last time, we had also talked about this idea of the importance of being realistic, and we did a little brainstorm session around that. And just to remind you again, you know, that if we're being realistic with our goals, in your own words, that had the potential for a lot of positive outcomes in terms of motivation, creating trust between the council and local government and the public, and building momentum, and people feeling heard. On the converse side, if you're setting unrealistic goals and you're not able to meet most of those, most of those goals that have been set, it can be demoralizing, certainly maybe demoralizing for staff, it might perpetuate government stereotypes, and so on and so forth. All right, are you ready to dig in? So we are starting on page 20 today, which was the economy section. And I did pass out, so you should have near you the results of the further prioritization that you had forwarded to us that we're going to use to guide our conversation today. And the good news is, with respect to economy, it seemed like there was some consensus with respect to some items that really stood out to you and in terms of being significant amongst a list of a lot of great ideas. And so Harrison, I might have you bring up the other sheet at this point. I'm going to bring up that workbook page again. No, the one that where we actually put it in phase one or phase two?
Oh, here.
So we're going to start to go through these similar to what we did last time, perhaps starting with item number 17. And then I'm looking for the council agreement and whether or not you think this should be in the plan, and then also whether or not you're thinking it's a phase one or phase two. And as we work through this list, you'll notice when we got to the bottom, there were some items that were only mentioned by one council member as being super high priority. And I guess I'll leave it up to you, whether or not you want to dig into those items or not, based on what's already been identified. And so if that, item number 17 was enhance access to affordable childcare for all populations through innovative partnerships. So I'm seeing heads nodding, so.
Looks like there was a consensus on that one.
Phase one?
Definitely.
Okay, all right.
Can I grab like a minute or two of everybody's time and sort of give you, give you a brief sketch of some of the things that at least I've been thinking about and shared with, with Mayor Potem Alter about the bigger vision for this? So I'll try and make it as brief as possible. I know the city's already doing a little bit of this, some of this with the county, and we've talked about that before. So it has to do with a combination of affordability and getting everybody the services that they need and paying people what they deserve, so that you can have actual qualified childcare personnel who then will stay on their jobs and have a career prospect. And the various elements that I see are, one, creating a fund, which I think is already partly underway, to, to help subsidize wages for, for childcare workers, to bring them up to a place where it's not, they're not in competition with fast food or something else, where it's a decent wage, hopefully at some point with, with benefits. And, and you can, we could start that with, with ARPA funds, for example. My, if we ever get there, my vision would be to switch that and some of these other things into lost and use and pass lost together with the county to be able to fund that, as well as some other things. The other things that I think, that I would think need to be funded is the gap between what people get in childcare assistance and what childcare actually costs, so that everybody can have access to quality childcare. And as well as working with the school district to expand their current pilot program, which is, which has this pre-K with wraparound care in four different schools, with people who can, can afford it, paying for the wraparound care, which is actually quite reasonable, and those who can't afford it are on free or reduced lunch, getting, getting, just getting the childcare, the childcare portion comp. That allows everybody who wants to have their kids attend pre-K, be able to attend pre-K, because they don't have to transfer them like twice a day while they're at work. It allows everybody, all the kids to start at an even K through 12 at a much more even scale place, so that they have much, there's a much better chance of equity in education going forward. And so that's sort of the, that, those are sort of the pieces that I would love to see us think as we go forward, that could be funded first by ARPA, and then I would hope by, by lost, working together with the school district and the county, so that we can really serve all the kids in, in the area.
Okay, we're ready to move on to the next item. And that was number 19, which is partnering with Iowa City Community School District, Iowa Labor Center, Local Trades and Other Stakeholders, to provide meaningful career development opportunities, pre-apprenticeship programs, et cetera. So consensus that should be on, in the plan, phase one or phase two?
Phase one.
Phase one, I think we're doing it. Okay. In our packet.
At least part of it.
Yes. I wondered about number 16, which is relating to Kirkwood and adult education. I don't know if that's combining those is too big of a scope, but I just see sort of a continuum there, that Kirkwood could be sort of one of the other stakeholders. But I don't know if folks agree with that or not.
Well, and to the extent, actually, that Kirkwood is also working to help with a training program for childcare workers that, so there's a partnership and that's about to launch.
Right, that's part of their regional center.
Right. And, and there is a very specific plan. So I think that, to your point, yes, I think that we could productively and without, oh, I say without adding a whole lot of work, but it seems like Kirkwood should be a partner, because there's a lot of overlap in terms of what they're doing to help with goals that we have in place or that we're discussing.
I would agree.
So we'll maybe tweak that language so that it encompasses 19 and 16? All right, then we had number 12, which is using ARPA funds to execute on agreeable recommendations in the inclusive economic development plan?
I know this is one that I put on there because it seems to reflect something we're sort of, I mean, we're already sort of working in some of these areas with the ARPA funds, so this seemed like a phase one, because we're in that window of using these. So that, that's why I included it in, in mine.
So I see a lot of head nodding. There seems to be general consensus that that would also be phase one. And then we had number 13, which was increasing small business technical assistance.
I'm happy to see that as a priority, because I think small business owners and the technical assistance is so critical for their success. So I, I think it's a good thing that it is here. And of course, we'll have to have partners to kind of help us achieve some of these things. But I'm happy it rose to the top of the list.
I didn't have it on mine, but I'm happy to put it on there and to throw in my lot with saying, yes, this should be a priority, because it is something that is so concrete, that can help a lot of people that I know is, you know, it's a frustration, and it's a time suck, and it can take money. And so I certainly do not have a problem with that if others are ready to prioritize it.
I think anytime we can encourage locally grown and local businesses, it's vitally important.
It may also be something that some, that someone like Merge can help with, or an organization like Merge can help with, is an incubator, as well as Tracy John's project.
Any thoughts on whether that should be a phase one or phase two?
I have a question, I guess, for Jeff and staff. I mean, what would that, what is that load looking like, since we have a couple of big projects already ahead? Excuse me, and I know all of this, the work behind the scenes is more of a lift than a one-liner. So what, does that seem feasible to, I mean, we have a lot of relationships. Is it possible to work through this without too much blood, sweat and tears from staff?
Yeah, I think when I look at all three and I guess four items with this one, I think we can make a lot of progress in those first three years, but I don't know that you're done with them in those, in that phase two. So the technical assistance, I think that's probably something you'll, you'll hear a little bit about tonight with the inclusive economic development plan. So that's one area. Maybe we start with that effort, and then maybe it grows beyond that in the, in the out year. So I don't have a problem putting these all in phase one, as long as the expectations are clear that it's probably a five-year and beyond type of effort.
My sense is that most of these are ongoing. I mean, we're sort of, we have this somewhat artificial division, but it's not going to end.
So I think you could put them in phase one.
Phase one, okay. All right, and then number two was about flexible incentives to support Schmids?
I mean, I think that it's kind of, all these are ongoing sort of things, working with, with our Schmids is one example of that. And so, I mean, you don't want to say do everything in phase one, but some of these are already something I think we're engaged in. And so I don't know if it makes sense to put it in a phase two, or I'm not sure what.
Well, this, so when I read this, you're not only talking about the Schmids, but other commercial nodes. And you're, we're talking incentives. So in my mind, that's largely financial incentive. Sure, there, there could be some, some land use incentives considered as well. Right now, we don't have very flexible incentives, right? We, if we rely on TIF, that's a very regimented type of process that we, we put somebody through. If you increase flexibility, we're doing probably more grant programs, more one-off types of incentives. We may be working with a Schmid on business recruitment, or, you know, whatever, whatever item they may be working on. So it's, it's, it's changing the way we look at economic development incentives a little bit in my mind. And I don't know what that looks like yet, but flexible is the key word there for me.
I think based on that, that feels more like a longer term, at least maybe other people are hearing it differently, but that makes it, makes more sense as phase two to me.
I'm, I'm seeing it as also something of a grassroots, you know, it's coming from the Schmids, or coming from the neighborhood commercial nodes that we, we might hear from them, you know, in terms of, how can the city help? You know, we, we're envisioning this, how can we partner with you? I, I mean, I think it's something that could happen, and you know, it's would be more on a merging level perhaps than something that we're sort of establishing as our own goal, to me. But it could be long-term if we want to keep it in there.
What strikes me is what you said, Jeff, that it was, it's kind of re-envisioning, I mean, it's a shift in, in economic development. So I see that as sort of, what are they going to come to us with, so that it's not all generating from us? And I do see that as kind of longer term, because certainly downtown district, that's an ongoing thing. They've had some, asked for some flexibility, and you know, it's ongoing as a relationship. But then with the South District now becoming, you know, getting all the Ts and Is, they will also come up with things. So I just, I see this as more of a longer term, without precluding, like, things may come up in the interim, but as far as a real strategic move, I can see it as.
We wouldn't walk away from an opportunity because we had it out at four years instead of two years.
Right, exactly. I mean, we play it as it comes, but I can see this more as on our map, as saying, maybe a couple years from now, we're going to have a better sense of what those incentives might look at, and we might be able to formalize them, or, or offer them as, for instances, that type of thing. So anyway, long-winded way to say phase two works for me.
Is there some natural overlap between some of what we're talking about with that and item number one? So that targeted marketing is a unique and attractive place to do business, is that item? Because I don't, you probably, like me, don't have these memorized. But just in terms of some of that flexible thing, and, you know, having that targeted marketing, I mean, that would be, you know, if we were doing number one, we would probably be working with our Schmids with that. I mean, I can't imagine we wouldn't have them as part of that discussion, although we have other groups too.
Right. And I'm, and I'm pretty sure that the, at least the downtown district already does its own, a lot of it, some of its, a chunk of its own targeted marketing.
I had selected number one because I thought it was more inclusive. It would include, as you just mentioned, number two. It was a broader, it was a more broader, that brought in several of these points. And so I would agree that number one is kind of, it can go into number two.
I agree. I'd, I'd put it on my list as important too, because we've been hearing for many years now, you know, what is Iowa City doing about attracting businesses to the community? So I think that it's very important to the community for them to see that, that it is a priority for us. And, but I could see us phasing into it, and to the second would be fine. But I think it is important.
So I'm hearing for number two, phase two? And for number one, you're thinking that could be combined with number two?
Certainly would overlap. I don't know if they have to be, try and cram it all into one bullet point, or maybe, I mean, but there is going to be some natural, like synergy there, right? And so, but that could also be, they could both be phase two with the idea that, what Counselor Thomas had said about, you know, we also want to make sure that we are letting ideas percolate up rather than us, you know, that needs some time to breathe. So I mean, to me, that makes a phase two goal, but if things come faster, then great. That's my thought.
So they're complementary in phase two, they're kind of complementary?
I think so.
And that's the consensus generally of the group? Okay. All right, so now we're into the ones that just had, were forwarded by one individual. Starting with 23?
That was mine. And I don't feel like I need to strong-arm anyone, just so long as I think that, I feel fairly confident there's already some really good work in thinking about what is the long-term vision for, you know, the riverfront. We were told to look for an outlier, and to me, that seemed really interesting, and as a way that could truly, it could a way that could truly, it could entice, you know, different businesses, it certainly could generate some economic development. I definitely see that as like a Phase Two with an eye on, you know, if things become available to continue, you know, being able to have kind of a longer-term vision and not have it all kind of chopped up with individual owners and whatnot. But I don't know what others think.
I think twenty-three and twenty-four become much more important if we get that grant that we just applied for with the City of Corahville and Johnson County. I don't know that I'd be willing to, you know, sort of shift significant funding as would be necessary for this kind of thing, but certainly if, you know, that vision was very inspiring and I think the regional collaboration of it makes it a lot more exciting and important.
I think for twenty-three and number eighteen, I feel like it was, is already in the pipeline. And so that's why I didn't give it any energy thinking that I can promote some other things that weren't.
I think it's more just I was like, kind of calling it out. So I don't have a problem.
If I can interject, the one thing I would say is just because something's in the pipeline now, you know, the pipeline's got so much capacity in it, when you're introducing two or three other items, something gets squeezed out. And if it's not a stated priority in here, yes, we're going to, we're always going to continue to try to chip away at our riverfront and make, you know, better public spaces and trails and whatnot. But if that's something that you absolutely want to see happen in these five years, you've, that's a big commitment to make. That's in the Better Together Plan. That's not our plan, but it's been recognized by the region as an important strategy for the larger area. I'm not saying it needs to be on here or it doesn't, but there is meaning to having it on here. And that goes with any item. When you're putting that at the top, one of the four, five, six things that make a list, your staff's going to focus on that. And especially come budget time, we're going to prioritize projects that get us closer to that goal. So there is a shifting of resources that happens.
Well, I certainly, I've looked, I've been advocating for a stronger river scape for a long time. I had a more modest, humble notion of it. I think it was perhaps, you know, something that could be done incrementally, not necessarily in one, as one major project. The notion of a Riverwalk always, has always appealed to me, which means that that walk needs to be comfortable, interesting, and so forth. But we could, we could implement that incrementally, perhaps using some grant funds to do it as well. I feel Riverfront Crossings Park really needs tree canopy, serious tree canopy and some additional seating. I mean, if, so some of these things are kind of, we have existing facilities, but perhaps they need to be improved upon. So I think there needs to be some emphasis. I'm not a big, I'm not an advocate for spending massive amounts of dollars on the river, improving the river, but at the same time, I think some work needs to be done there. So if, perhaps if it's in the strategic plan as a, and I think I'm a little bit frustrated with the Phase One, Phase Two. I kind of just see this as something that is in the plan and we need to take advantage of opportunities as they arise. But I, it is, I think it is a good point of emphasis. We have a lot of valuable amenities along the river. The art museum is now another. And what I have always felt is they don't link up to one another. It would be interesting to try to create kind of a necklace of amenities which integrate through a Riverwalk, you know, corridor experience that people would experience all the way from Hancher down to Riverfront Crossings Park. So, yeah, I would say let's have it in there, but I, you know, I don't think it needs, just see how it, how it moves forward.
So maybe add twenty-three to Phase Two?
Okay with that.
Or does it make sense? I don't mean to draw this out, but, and I actually would love to have it on Phase Two. I am the one that put it out there and I'm taking my cue from the way that Jeff described this of like, if we want something to do this, then we need to make sure it's on there. That said, there are several other that are one-offs and maybe, does it make sense? I'm going to put myself into your shoes and say, is it too complicated if we were to actually briefly just walk through what the other ones were to see, rather than go through the list and be like, yep, that needs to go on there?
I think...
Is that, is the most efficient way the way that we've been doing it? I don't want to add more time to, or to take over your facilitation.
I'm open to ideas. I don't know that there's a right or a wrong way. I think, I know, we've already dealt with sixteen, so there was just number eighteen and number eleven left on this list.
I think, given the grant application, it makes sense to put it into Phase Two and see what, see what happens because then if we get the grant, you start working on that, maybe you can sort of do a few things absent the grant. But, I mean, I take Jeff's point that if it's something we want for the future, we ought to have it in there somewhere.
Why don't we put it on Phase Two? It sounds like there's a pretty good consensus there. And so then that brings us to eighteen, which seems to tie back a little bit to seventeen.
Which is already, I think it's already in train. That's what I think the mayor said, he hadn't put it on his list because it's already in train.
Yeah, I think I had that on my list. And I think it's more, I think I added it in there because I do, I do want to place an emphasis in our strategic plan on the, improving the life of our young people. And in that regard, you know, I'm interested in seeing the final product of this thing and if that's, if that's in here in some fashion. Because, you know, Jeff had mentioned, you know, before we started this exercise, if we had any thoughts regarding our budget. And I'm beginning to see that there may be things that we have, we have in here that may have been somewhere or another dropped out. And we may want to consider them to be a budget item. It's not necessarily a strategic plan item, but it is something that might provide an opportunity for being a project within the budget. But I'm, you know, I'm fine with not having it in the strategic plan.
So eighteen, no?
I'm okay with not having it.
And then number eleven was the last one.
Right, I think that was me. I stuck number eleven in because when you look at some of the empty spaces downtown and some of the places that we have a really hard time filling, not just downtown, some other places, too. There've been some at Pepperwood Plaza as well. But I, right now, I'm mindful of the downtown with places like Active Endeavors that are really big places and the, and the US Bank Building, which is still sitting there. And us wanting to support, and there are just spaces that probably, that no single business is going to take on, on their, on their own at this point if we want to have a vibrant downtown that really attracts businesses and not just, and not chains and so forth and not just, I mean, I love the restaurants and bars, but we want to mix, we want to mix as well. And we're trying to support smaller businesses, BIPOC businesses and others. I have no, I have no vision, claim to a vision at all as to how this would be done or who would do it or who would fund it. But we have these spaces that are empty because they're too big. And if there were some way to sort of invest in splitting them up, then, then we might actually get takers in more places where a lot of these small businesses could find a home. But I don't have, I don't know if you have thoughts on that, Jeff, but I have no clue how that would happen.
Well, they're largely vacant and underused because there's an economic issue, right? The private market can't afford to retrofit those and then, you know, make the numbers work. So this item's largely targeted financial incentives to underutilized properties. And that can be really exciting, but it takes a partner as well. You have to have a property owner that also wants to invest with you. So, yeah, as long as you understand this is probably more of a financial item than, than anything else. Could be, could be land use. I mean, there could be some land use changes that might incentivize turnover of those properties, but, but I would say largely financial.
So, yeah, I don't feel strongly one way or the other about putting it in, but that's why I flagged it for discussion.
Well, we included number two, right? I guess that's longer term, but it seems to me that our commercial nodes might put forth the idea of how do we retrofit, you know, how do we make sure vacant spaces are being used? So I think we could, I think it would be captured likely in, you know, the sort of what we're imagining in number two.
Good point.
I think it also goes, goes along with number one, what we discussed. I mean, we've got a, we've got a market, Iowa City is a place to have your business, too, to grow and develop your business. So it really goes along with number one also.
So I think I hear it'd be addressed, it'd be addressed somehow potentially naturally as those...
Right, or you can just fold it in or whatever.
Yeah. So maybe not including that in number two, which also was included with the number one, so.
All right, so that was our list then for economy. So I think we're ready to transition to safety and well-being. In fact, there was a fair amount of consensus around number eight, which is the integration of community mobile crisis into nine-one-one dispatch protocols. Is that a Phase Wiener?
I think so. And I think, too, my comment, and there's a little asterisk there, thank you for including that, by the way. Just as I was looking at these and because I had to pick, you know, our task was to try and focus in on a limited number, just to get us moving. So I cheated because I think that these three, they all involve community mobile crisis in some way or another, you know, in part or whatever. So they seem very complementary. And, you know, we probably would, you know, promoting nine-eight-eight, you know, we've probably do a lot of these things together anyway, right? I mean, that's kind of my thought process. Eight, five, and three, sort of just, they seem to be very related to each other. I don't know if, what the best way to approach it. Maybe it makes sense to have them out as separate things so we can check those boxes. But in terms of having to pick four, I cheated, so.
Yeah, it's like, I can see putting five and three together. Eight seems to me something of a standalone simply because of all the different communities and organizations that have to be, that have to agree and have to work together in order to make that happen, in order to agree, all the, all the folks who make up the Johnson County Emergency Group. And then you have to, then you have to have the training and you have to have, we have to, you have to be at a point where there's sufficient understanding that the community mobile crisis is, is in a good position to go on calls by themselves without it, without being in danger, so that sort of all, there's a ton of boxes to check. So, I mean, I see, I also see it as Phase One, but it's going to take a while.
I think I didn't pick number eight as a priority because it, it seemed as though we're kind of already doing that, we're already in that phase and utilizing the community mobile crisis with nine-one-one calls and delineating which are appropriate for the community crisis versus the law enforcement. So I hadn't, I hadn't listed that because I kind of thought we were already...
Yeah, it's not, it's not, it's, I mean, it's not happening yet through our nine-one-one operators and that's going to hap, that's like a much bigger conversation.
Number three, where it says with the goal of tripling current coverage in the five-year period. So Iowa City area is covered, so I'm not exactly sure if that was like expanding...
So this is the mental health liaison position, which is the position that's embedded in our police department. And right now, we have one individual working approximately forty hours a week. Obviously, police is 24/7 and the mental health calls come in at all times of day. So we've certainly found that resource to be beneficial and it's something that, that we would like to work towards as staff, but that would be hiring more liaisons so you have somebody day, night, evening shifts, and then eventually enough to cover 24/7.
When I read this, I just saw the word program, I didn't see Iowa City. So I thought it was expanding this across the county. And I thought, well, that doesn't involve us.
Yeah, okay. It already says five-year period, so it feels like a natural Phase Two because it's an ongoing...
Yes.
So Jeff, are you, would you say these are three distinct items?
I think you could, I think three is distinct because it involves our operations. Eight and five, you could, you could combine. It just depends on how broad you want to be, right? If we just want to support mobile crisis and civilianized response in general, you can lump them all three together. But they all would have very distinctly different action plans and be worked on by different people, both internal and external. So as we get into the planning phase, your staff's probably going to break them out. If you'd like to combine them here, that's, that's fine, too.
And again, I'm not really saying with the final version, like, this may have just been me trying to like, think all three of these. And I think the phrase that Jeff just used, civilian response or whatever that phrase was, I think that, that kind of was exactly what the thread that I saw through the, all three of them. But, but yes, actioning them out individually, I mean, that's, I have no problem with that if the rest of the council thinks that makes sense. That sounds great to me.
I think it's nice to be able to show the progress, you know, with distinct, with distinct steps.
And also have some reiteration that this is a priority, this is a priority, this is a priority, and we're looking at it in different, and we're looking in different ways.
Well, and it creates clarity, too, about what each piece is.
So if we were to back up to number eight, and I guess I'm unclear if this is in process or not in process?
It's, it's being discussed. I don't think it's very far into an implementation phase, but it's being discussed. So eight could be a Tier One. We're already doing five a little bit, both promotions and financially supporting. And then three, again, we already started that program. They could all be Tier One. If you want to put something in year two, it's probably the mental health liaison. That's probably more of a longer-term goal. We might make it halfway there in the first tier and finish it out in the second tier.
Well, while we're on the theme of kind of civilianizing response and that, that kind of thing, Sean and I both had twenty-eight in there, which I call Fun Patrol, just because it makes you all laugh. But community, social, and recreational sort of mobile outreach, this could be primarily directed through like the rec department and we have some of those resources already. But imagining something that could be more consistently going out into the neighborhoods, checking on people, you know, providing different levels of engagement and interaction, not just like show up at the park at this one time kind of thing. But I think there's a continuum of interventions that, you know, very broadly could be classified as response that that would fall into as well.
Well, and I think combining those three, you know, was sort of my way to include something like this that is more proactive community building because part of our goal in this, and it's mentioned in a couple of different ways, is this idea of resiliency and community resiliency, whether it's in terms of fighting, you know, the effects of global climate change or whatever that might be, so that, you know, the healthy atmosphere, healthy neighborhoods, and Councillor Thomas talks about this way more eloquently than I do, this concept of, so it just seems like a way the city could actively engage that. So that's, that's also why I kind of threw that in there. Because it is a little bit different from the other ones, it kind of stood out to me, but in a very positive sort of way, so.
Number twenty-eight, you're...
Twenty-eight, yeah.
Yeah. I, yeah, I think if, when I look at twenty-eight, which is more, is kind of a programming approach, if we were to combine that with what some of the things I'd been advocating, which was places within the neighborhoods, the fifteen-minute city, so you have access to places in which these kinds of programs would then flourish. That, to me, is sort of a comprehensive view on how we try to make life more interesting and fun for the kids in their own neighborhood. That is their world. You know, the kids primarily live in a very, they live in COVID all the time, right? I mean, they don't have, unless their parents are willing to drive them out of the neighborhood, many kids are really, the neighborhood is their world. So how can we make that world more interesting and fun?
So I want to back up for just a minute and make sure that we're kind of disposing of these correctly. So I'm, if the city manager was suggesting that potentially we put... So I'm, if the city manager was suggesting that potentially we put eight, five in phase one, and three in phase two, is there consensus on that, that we can go ahead and drop that in? Okay.
Although I do like the idea of expanding, you know, the way Jeff described it, of going to kind of a 24-hour service, if I understood, on number three.
Right, and I would hope that we would get there sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'd like, I mean, I think you were suggesting it move forward now, it may take longer than three years, but I'd like to see it again.
Yeah, I think if three could be in number one.
Yeah, it, it could. And, so we have the one position that's funded now. We have a second position in the budget this current fiscal year that we hope to work with community on. The third one, I guess I was thinking would, would maybe be a little further out, but we could, we could try to bump that up. It's one of those programs, because it's so new, we just want to slowly work it in. But if you want to put it in one, and just know that that last step may occur in four and five, that, that's okay, too.
That's fine. I mean, that would be fine of me, anyway, but, and I would also love ultimately for the goal of that one to really be to have the, the funding flow to community, and that it's their person, and, and eventually, you know, sort of, they expand the capacity of the, the knowledge and the, of their capacity to be able to go out on calls on their own.
I agree, and I think it really goes with number eight, which is as the 911 dispatch is going to include mobile crisis, starting with that co-response, so that everyone in the system kind of learns what that can look like. Will probably take a few years and be, you know, a transition, but I think ramping up the availability of the liaison will directly facilitate that.
All right, so why don't we move on to number 12, which was leveraging ERP funds to build capacity for nonprofits? Heads nod, is that a phase one, because it involves ERP funds? ARPA funds?
Man, I think we definitely saw during COVID the, the need for this.
Well, we just did a, what, $400,000, was our?
Yeah, that'll come back to you at your next meeting, probably. And then we have the larger capital grant program. So the first one will be less about building capacity, more operational, expanding programs. The second one is more capacity building.
Like, putting the current vision into the strategic plan?
Right.
So phase one?
Mm-hmm.
Number 16 was the neighborhood nests or micro hubs?
I had this as important, because I was thinking, and it kind of, kind of goes along with my rationale for number 30, which was the senior centers, the community includes people of all ages, and, and the safety and well-being is all members of the community, you know, at what their age. And I think the hubs that had been started and the nests that were started, we got a lot of positive response on that, and I think it's, it's, it's really important, especially for the teenage kids.
I, I put this just because I knew, albeit in a limited fashion, that these were really successful. And in many ways, it overlaps, or the complements for sure, the Fun Patrol. I mean, nests during COVID were used initially and perhaps primarily as sort of a, a resource for the school district, so that kids could have the, the kind of resources, technological, physical, and whatever, to be able to learn. But we've quickly learned after that, that it was so much more about being able to be together, and that it is a social thing as well. It was incredibly useful for families, so there's, and they can be tailored to what the neighborhood is and what the neighborhood needs are. And I just think that it could be a really cool model, moving forward outside of, even though we are sitting here masked, but outside of a COVID paradigm, but to really think of it as like, how are there ways to bolster people in the neighborhoods? And to that point, this could be something that it's not limited necessarily to teens. I mean, there's, a nest could be a cohort, if there are people who are seniors near and want to get together, that it'd be difficult to perhaps get all the way downtown to the senior center or whatnot. Anyway, that's, that's my plug for it. It is kind of a big lift, I will say that. Because you have to find space and partners who are willing to do that and to be there to staff and whatnot, so just kind of fair warning, but it is, so my sense is that if we wanted to put this on, it would be a phase two, just because it is, it's a pretty big lift and you need a lot of collaboration. On the flip side, that's precisely what we were told maybe to, to focus on, big bang for the buck and big collaborations.
So now 16 and 28 somewhat co-mingled together?
Yeah, I mean, I think 16 is like physical spaces and 28 is more.
It speaks over to what I was emphasizing or trying to stress was, great to have the programming, and then where will the programming take place? And so they, you know, and frankly, I'm not that familiar with the neighborhood nest concept, but I, I grabbed on to it, because, you know, I like the feel of what is being described. But, you know.
So that would be a phase two.
I think it's important, one way or another, that we try to identify a way of, with our strategic plan of promoting and developing program, as well as locations, places where that program can be implemented.
Well, and it fits really well, actually, in terms of, one of the things that Parks and Rec, I know that I heard from survey and whatnot, the pool notwithstanding, but about going out into the neighborhoods. And so this might be a way to, to kind of solve for both, if they were combined. So it would be the programming from Fun Patrol, along with trying to find partners in specific locations in neighborhoods, perhaps, so.
I was going to suggest, maybe the wording gets tweaked, so there's just more flexibility in how it's approached, but the end goal is to meet people where they are.
Yeah.
And to provide this connection. But I'm hearing phase two. So maybe we combine 16 and 28 in, as a phase two item? All right, number two had to do with working with Johnson County to launch a community violence intervention effort.
Yeah, I think that's underway, and, and given, you know, I guess the increased violence on some level over the past couple of years that we've experienced, I think that partnership and collaboration is pretty important.
I know the county put some ARPA funds into it and has to sort of jump, to sort of jumpstart it.
Over a million dollars?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of it. And so, and I guess I would put it as, if we agree to it, I guess I'd put it as phase one, since it's already started and it's, and it's trying to get off the ground. Have you participated in any, Mayor?
I haven't received, and I, I haven't received a note of when their meetings are, but they're aware.
Yeah, they haven't had a meeting since you were.
Yep, so phase one?
I think so.
Phase one? Number seven was considering options such as mailed letters as alternatives to routine, non-emergent traffic stops.
Yeah, I, I had that in there, and it reminded me of, I mean, that, that was something that had been brought up some while ago and didn't move forward, but, you know, and it reminded me also that when I was, in our previous discussions under mobility, that part of my concern with, you know, safe streets had to do with trying to promote what I refer to as self-regulating streets, so they wouldn't require policing at the same level. So I'm, I'm happy to see this in here, actually. I mean, it, we, we went through Black Lives Matter, policing was really the issue associated with that whole experience that we went through. So I think it's important to have something like this. Hopefully, some of the issues I had addressed on street safety, as it pertains to roadway design, will, will work its way in here, whether in the strategic plan or in the budget. But the whole thrust of, you know, was, that I learned from that whole experience, was how can we reduce contact? You know, either through finding the better professional to deal with certain types of calls for service, or another way of issuing, in this case, something related to traffic law enforcement through some other means other than the traffic stop, which we know can blow up in very bad ways. So for both the, the driver and the police officer. So, yeah, I think that's, I'm, and I don't know if that came from staff or from.
I don't know, I think we talked about it at the, at the, at the original.
Yeah, anyway, I'm supportive of it, and I'm happy that it made its way onto the list.
So I think of cameras, you know, speeding cameras to kind of meet this need, or.
Cameras are different, you know, that we, a previous council banned them.
Yeah, because this would, I, I don't think this would be what we want, because anybody, well, cameras.
Oh, yeah.
Because everybody would get them, and there could be, yeah. Okay, so I don't know what other options there would be outside of.
I think, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, I think in our original discussion, and John and I have talked about this, is, is more like the taillight kind of things, like we got so much discussion with the Black Lives Matter, too, that perhaps someone was stopped, and the excuse was that your taillight's out, but then they warranted a search of the vehicle. And I think we were thinking, if it's just, I know, I shouldn't say just a taillight, because that's important to, to maintain your, your car, but we'd, we'd also talked about even having the law enforcement have some kind of a, a taillight day where people could come, and, and we'd provide the bulbs free of charge, and, and maybe these letters could say, hey, on such and such, we noticed that your light's out, and on such and such a day, we're going to help you replace it. You know, I think that's kind of what we're thinking versus speeding and those kind, I don't know, John, you can correct me on that, but.
We have the bulbs program.
I don't know that we should get in the weeds, but I might ask our city attorney to just file in, because the state came after we did that in 2020.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got lost.
Yeah, so in 2020, we, secondary stops, we kind of said no to, and the state came back and said.
State came back and said that there can be no policy that dictates to police officers that they shall not enforce the law. I think that our response to that has been largely, look, I mean, as it has always been the case, you know, there are higher priorities and lower priorities, and I think that's how that's mostly been governed and dictated by officers.
So if you, if you move forward, what I might suggest is you back off of the specific mailed letters, because that's a pass-fail type of situation, and I don't know that we know that that's really doable at this time. But alternative enforcements, or alternative to traditional enforcement, special events, expansion of the bulbs program, like something we can work on wording that would be a little bit more all-encompassing, understanding what your goal is here.
I think that's fine, personally.
That sounds good.
I can support that.
Do you see that as a phase one or phase two?
Firstly, a phase one. Be nice to see some, again, movement on this question of trying to reduce, find alternatives to police initiating calls for service.
And I might just remind council that we're at, right at four o'clock, so.
Is there a agreement then on phase one?
I'm, yeah.
Okay, so number seven, we'd reword and put under phase. Okay, so the remaining items just had one person advance, so I guess I'll leave it up to you, if you want to go through those individually, or if you want to pull out a few for discussion?
I thought number six was something that contained some things that might be phase one doable and phase two doable, kind of, and, so in terms of like our public safety applicant pools are diverse through new approaches to recruitment and testing, as well as consideration of expanded residency allowances. So it seems like the easier lift of those two, and I can certainly be corrected if I'm wrong, would be looking at some of the expanded residency, you know, footprints, and that's something that I've, I've heard about even before I was, you know, while I was running. But also, then, then looking at some of these other issues might take, take a little more time, but I think that diversity in our hiring pool, and trying to do what we can at the policy or the city council level to, you know, help with that process. So some version of that seems like, that's one of the reasons why I tried to keep that somewhere in my, my stuff.
Twenty-eight and twenty-six, honestly, they kind of nestle great with 28 and 16, which is that, kind of the mobile, community, social, recreational resources and NEST program, so I, I won't even bring it up at this point for a great, for more discussion.
I'll just quick speak to number 14, probably have a little bias on this, and I see Tracy's in the audience here, and I think she was a, really spearheaded this program in relationship with the College of Nursing, and, and it was a very successful program, and I would hope that it would be phase one, that we can continue with this, because it really targets the low-income and marginalized populations, many of whom, you know, they don't know what their resources are, or they really don't have any knowledge that this mold in their bathroom is causing flare-ups in their asthma. And these folks from the College of Nursing did the education on that and was very helpful, and I think it's, it's very, very important, and I would, I would hope we could do phase one and continue with that.
I mean, I can support it being in phase one.
I can also support what you were talking about, Sean, that's sort of the, because I know, Jeff, that we've made, that you've made, we've made substantial efforts to increase applicant pools, to look, to look for more diverse applicant pools, to consider, you know, offering some, some sort of educational period first, so that somebody could pass a test, and doing a variety of things. And I, it's probably worthwhile having it in there to, to emphasize that we are, that we are looking at these things, and will continue to do so as opportunities come along.
Yeah, that's.
Ideas come up.
You mean, it's something that's routine. I think what, I think what I'd need to pull out of this from, from you eventually is whether you want to set residency policies. Typically, that's been something that's either bargained or through admin regulation. If that's something you feel strongly about, we'll certainly take your direction on, on that, but that's, that being called out specifically would, I think, just warrant some discussion before we move too far.
Is it something that can be left in as part of the vision, or you're saying in terms of?
It's consideration of that.
For consideration?
Yeah.
And then get down to brass tacks and?
Yeah, because obviously residency has a greater, there's, there's more implications than just the, the breadth of applicant pool, right? That, that can start to affect operations, right? If people are supposed to be responding to emergencies and they're 90 miles away, or 60 miles away, or 20 miles, all that makes a difference. And those are just some of the nuances I'd want to have a discussion about, and then wherever you're comfortable with, we could, we could work on the, the policy side of that.
So just working down the list here, so for number six, I'm hearing that maybe the, the strategic plan item is looking at that residency, considering the residency requirement for public safety?
Maybe even a little more general than that, the ensuring the public safety applicant pools are diverse through new approaches, to me, is the most important part of that item. I don't know how everybody else feels about that. And the expanded residency allowances is just one.
Potential means.
Potential means, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
So this may end up in the people section of the strategic plan, just as an FYI, and then maybe staff can consider how to make it more action-specific, because we, at the end of the day, you kind of want to be able to check it off the list, hopefully. So, and then 20 and 26, we were saying were kind of tied enough to the NEST Fun Lab, okay? And so then 14 was the nursing program, and so I was hearing support for that, and phase one support? Okay, so number 14, phase one? And so then I think the only one that we hadn't discussed was 30?
I kind of assumed that was something we had already signed off on.
Yeah, oh, yeah, the, the senior center. Again, I go back to saying that I think our community involves persons of all ages, and we can't forget the seniors because we have an aging population, and we've been talking about updating the senior center for a long time. So I think it's very important that we get, get moving on that.
So that's already in process or?
The exterior work is in progress, at least the, the planning for that. The interior piece has a limited budget for, we have about three and a half million budgeted in our CIP. I think the master plan itself, dreaming big, called for about, I don't know, fourteen million, fifteen million. That's probably not going to be realistic unless it's a top priority and is going to take a lot of resources from other initiatives, but it's important that we execute, we find that right, that right level to execute at. So that, that's our goal. We've already set aside some funds, might need to bump that up a little, but we're, we're getting close.
So, I mean, is it possible to reword this a little bit? Because the, the, the letter of the law, so to speak, is that it says, and execute on the facility master plan recommendations. Well, first of all, we can't get that done in five years itself, right? And then also if it's fourteen, fifteen million dollars, I mean, maybe it's, that second part of it could be just reworded a little bit to.
Continuing progress on the?
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't want it to drop out of our current CIP if we don't include it in our short term, right? But I, yeah, I agree, I don't think we can execute the entire.
Thing in five years and.
At least to me, it's not of that level. I'm sure we could if we prioritized it, right? But.
I mean, there are a lot of things in our CIP which I kind of view this as one that are not being discussed in our strategic plan conversations, but I don't know. I mean, is it necessary to, that this be in there to?
I don't, I don't think it hurts. It's a major project that's going to require significant resources, so I certainly don't think it hurts to be in there.
Okay.
I think we just need to probably word it in a way that, you know, make sure that the, the public expectation that we're setting is not unrealistic, that, that we can't necessarily achieve the fifteen million dollar vision, but we can certainly make some comprehensive improvements that will enhance that facility.
So why don't we put number thirty on phase one, but maybe we'll work with staff to further refine that? And then Harrison, why don't you put number six on there just as a note, with a note that we will probably shift it to people? And so I, I think we're wrapped up then on?
Can, can I throw just one more?
On this segment?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I just could throw out like a really, one that's easy that would not, well, that would be a little bit of staff time, but not a lot, is number eighteen. It's annually hold three elected official listening post per city council district, and in terms of a very doable goal.
Yeah.
That, you know, would, would require some because we have to have some city staffing for, you know, let's make sure that the meetings are open and accessible and stuff, but, but either in phase one or phase two, depending how we want to work into that, but I think that's one that is, is a good opportunity for a council to step up and say, you know, rest some stuff city staff, we're going to, you know, put some of our, you know.
Right, it exists in the past.
That was kind of, I had initiated this, this one, and the language changed a little bit. I had described it as a town hall rather than a listening post. I don't know if, meaning that it would be something there where there would be representation by the council as well as city staff, so that, you know, there would be an opportunity for questions related to a broader, a broader range could be, could be raised and addressed at the meeting.
I will say we've already had two listing posts this year, so we'll have one more.
I think that, that I say about the listening post is because that is smaller and just it's more conversational. The one that Council Burgess and I did earlier this year was, was a really, was, was a good experience, like, so I mean, I kind of, you know, I liked that model that we had, so I just, I thought that'd be something we could throw, throw into there, something we can, we can, we can do, like, and check that box and.
Yeah, I agree, Council Harmsen, that it's, that it's important, and it used to be a regular thing that we as a council did, we just planned for them on a quarterly basis, and staff requirement time was pretty much Kelly or the city clerk finding a location and posting information about it. So I didn't believe that it went to the level of putting it actually in the strategic plan, it's just something that we as the councilors should, should plan to do, but does that, I mean, I know I've been on the council a long time, so I should know whether that's really strategic plan or just plan and part of our duties as a council member. I don't know what other folks' opinion is.
Yeah, we've been doing them as long as I've been on councils, and they haven't been in the strategic plan.
Right. With COVID, it kind of fell by the wayside unfortunately, but.
I don't think it belongs in the strategic plan, but that's just me.
It is important, it is important.
I just thought that was some disappointment.
I think the other thing is the items nine, ten, and eleven, I don't know how they, those
all basically just deal with the facility and personnel needs for the police and fire departments. They have very actionable things, but to me, the common thread was, you know, as the city grows, are we, are we, you know, and as we try and shift some of the policing into, you know, civilian response and some of those kinds of things, I don't know, do we want to just deal with it outside of a strategic plan, but I think that's something that, you know, in terms of like the five-year outlook, you know, we've got some decisions to make for like, do we build a new fire station, you know, do we look at the amount of firefighters we have, do we look at the staffing levels in our police department and, you know, in our, you know, and those kinds of things, it's not really exciting, but I mean, it seems like that's something that, whether it's in a strategic plan or not, just I felt it was worth a mention that that needs to be on our.
I think we're going to have to talk about those.
Right.
But I don't know that it belongs in the, I understand it'd be a financial item, but I don't know, I don't, I didn't see it as being a major here.
There's mention in the resource section on most of those as well. Broaden that out if need be.
I'm done, I promise. Thank you for indulging me.
All right, so now we're going to shift over to the resources section. And actually, I'm going to ask Jeff and/or Rachel or whoever else might be appropriate to kind of walk us through each of the three sub areas here.
Yeah, so we're starting on page thirty, and staff put together this with the understanding that we're probably going to have to add to this section once the plan is starting to, to come together, because each of your individual items might, might impact the, the resources that, that we need. But as you look at the, the facilities side of things, facilities, equipment, and technology, I think you'll see kind of heavy emphasis on just a, a more comprehensive facilities plan. We have a number of facility projects in our CIP. You mentioned the senior center, we have rec center updates, city park pool, we have landfill, wastewater, we've got a lot of, a lot of projects in the works, equipment building is in there too, but we really need to continue to stay focused and to, to implement that. Probably the biggest thing that we need to start looking at is this, this, this building here as both police and fire are, are really cramped, and, and that can impact operations long-term, so really looking at city hall and, and this kind of public safety headquarters building and refreshing space needs study and beginning to look at what alternatives can be. Part of that is going to, part of this plan then also looks at our vehicles and, and transition to an electric fleet, so, you know, we've been doing that as opportunities come up with buses and, and other vehicles. The climate action team and public works department are working on a broader electric implementation plan for vehicles. As we know, those early in on, on electric vehicles, particularly when you get into the heavier equipment like buses or street sweepers and things like that, you're probably going to be paying a pretty good premium for those first out of the market. So those are some of the things early on. As we look towards the phase two action steps that are listed, you see some focus on smart city initiatives and, and really trying to actionize our, a lot of the data that we have here at the city in a way that's both helpful for operations, but also that the public can take advantage of and, and utilize. So those are some of the highlights for the facilities, equipment, and technology section. Again, I think the biggest thing is preparing for those very significant facility needs, particularly in those areas where we're operating in facilities that were really built in the sixties or seventies, when our population was quite a bit different, and just thinking that we need to be planning for the next, next generation of employees and service delivery. The big thing with that is it is resource intensive, both from a staff standpoint, but also financially. Obviously, we're talking about buildings that could cost anywhere from five million on the low end to twenty to thirty million, depending on what we're, we're building, so the financial planning is, is big in that as well. On the people's side.
Maybe I'll, maybe I'll stop you here and just see with respect to facilities, equipment, and technology, I mean, we have the vision, the strategies, and then some of the action steps that Jeff covered. Were there, is there any council feedback that, on what's being proposed?
What strikes me in looking at this is that the addressing overlaps and gaps in city programs and services organization-wide and identifying opportunities for improved coordination, that takes a lot of time and energy to step back and do that. It also seems necessary in order to undertake, for example, city hall redesign, you know, where are people going to be and who's in what department and what is the overall organizational structure? So I, I don't know if that process can happen, you know, sort of sooner or be integrated throughout, but it seems to me that that, lots of other things benefit from that analysis, but I also understand it's very resource intensive.
Good point.
And I'm very happy to see the, the focus on climate and, and sort of moving into the city of the future or where we are, where we'd like to be with, with building, with both the, the way buildings are built and, and the, and the vehicles that we're using, that's.
I'm not exactly sure how to phrase this, but how, in thinking about like the, the city hall and public safety headquarters space, you know, that, that particular action item, would you feel like you're kind of running to catch up? I mean, is this, is this particular action item, is this something that perhaps should have been started several, how urgent is this, I guess is this most short, I mean, I, I, you and I have talked about it, and I know that, you know, the facilities themselves, I mean, they're, they're outgrowing, the, the departments are outgrowing the building, and the building is older, but I'm just wondering, like, how fast do you need to move to be able to not make this incredibly painful, living in this space?
Yeah, most of the city hall is fully, is fully occupied. I mean, we've used, we've, we've converted file rooms to offices and, and closets to offices, so it, it's pretty full. The police side as well, it's, it's difficult for us to bring in new people, even civilians or officers, just because we don't have the, the, you know, the right space. There's very few spaces in which you could hold large meetings, this room is about, about it, that we have for, for that capability, so there's some impact to operations. The fireside, definitely, there's an impact to operations, it's just an older model station without modern amenities, and it's not laid out as efficiently as a new station would be. So the, I guess the short answer is we're operating just fine out of there now, and we probably will operate just fine. It's not ideal, but it's also not something that we want to wait a decade to address. And so the planning is that first step, and really trying to understand what those needs are, what's that square footage that we need, how can this space be reconfigured to accommodate? Likely have to move some operations off-site as we grow because we're in a constrained location, so it's, it's studying those issues and then coming back and, and painting a picture and pushing forward from there. So I see this as a, as an item that does not get completed in this five-year plan, but I, I like it to be in here so that we can start that planning process intentionally and really start to focus on the financial side of things so that we don't show up with this urgent need in a decade and not have any money and any kind of thoughts on what we're going to be doing.
Sort of like Laura says, the sooner this planning and work can get done makes sense because then you can actually know what it is that you need to work towards.
It seems like generally there's comfort with what's been presented there, so why don't we shift gears to people?
Yeah, so on, on the people's side, you know, clearly we have a lot of areas, I think in the environmental scan, if you can think back to that at the beginning of this process, I talked to you a lot about just staff being at capacity in a number of different areas, and, and that's something we're going to continue to have to be mindful of, really making sure that those core services remain staffed at the appropriate level as our community grows. And we're going to have to, certainly going to have to work on that in this five-year strategic plan period. But beyond that, a lot of what this focuses on, this document focuses on, is just recognizing that workplace expectations are changing, and we can't fall behind on that curve. So we have to look at our, our compensation structure, we're probably going to have to do comprehensive benefit reviews to make sure that our benefits are in line with, with modern expectations for employees. And then I think more of an internal function for us is just making sure that we're communicating as well as we can internally and that we're taking advantage of opportunities for departments to work together and, and really being as efficient as we can with, with our staffing and resources. So there's a lot of, a lot of specific things listed here, I can answer questions on those, but that's what this focuses on, is making sure we have enough staff to carry out our core services, and then making sure that we're still viewed as, as an employer of, you know, top choice and that are, that we can attract and retain great talent.
I think in the strategies and on the bottom of the phase one action steps, it talks about diversity, and, and so that is something that I think is Iowa City, and I think it should be reflected in our city hall.
Do you have, with, thinking of it as, you know, through the personnel and the people who comprise city staff, do you have sort of like a, a sub-strategic plan where, where the team members are looking to, like what, as our own institution, as our own organization, not carrying out city, but more like on the personnel side, you know, like the heads of department saying, okay, so here's what we want to do for team members or as a department, we, you know, does that happen as well?
Yeah, I, yeah, department directors will share their thoughts routinely with, with us in the city manager's office, and really through the budget process is when we have the discussions about staffing needs, that's when it's the most focused discussions, and, and so we'll get, you know, we'll usually get the department requests through the budget process on what they feel like they, they need for staffing, and they're, they're excellent about being realistic, so they're not shooting for the moon or that ideal situation, but they're good at saying, this is a need that needs to be addressed before services start to see, you know, you see an impact in service delivery levels.
And staff has an opportunity to come and speak to city manager staff, I forget the name of it.
Yeah, we do an annual program where we meet with, with the frontline staff throughout the summer, so it's about, you know, twenty-five, thirty meetings, and, and that's a good opportunity for us to hear directly from those frontline employees on what they feel the needs are, and then we can kind of compare that to with what the, the department director and supervisors' perspectives are, and they mostly align in terms of what those needs are. perspectives are. And they mostly align in terms of what those needs are.
All right. So it's feeling like people are generally comfortable with this as well. So then we'll move over to financial.
Yeah. On the financial side, a couple of things that I would point out, really focusing on the health of our various funds. So we call out our enterprise funds, which are mostly you think of as our utility accounts or parking, transit, making sure that they're healthy, they're stable, that they have reserves. We saw the importance of having reserves during COVID and so making sure we don't let those slip away. And then, of course, from the consumer standpoint, we don't want to be in a situation where we have to do large spikes, you know, and we've done a very good job. I think the council's done a good job where you haven't really had to consider a 10% or 15% water hike, a water rate hike or sewer. And that's really that careful stewardship and making sure that those fund balances are good and that we're generating a good surplus every year. Same goes for the general fund. There's some commentary here about maintaining bond rating, maintaining emergency fund balances and facility reserve funds. Again, that's all just careful planning for the future. I think the biggest piece there is that facility reserve fund. I think, I think in order for us to carry out our facility needs, we're going to have to have a substantial amount of cash on hand and we can't rely on referendums and borrowing for some of the types of buildings that we're looking at, right? I always tell folks, it's very hard to get 60% voter support for an equipment maintenance building because it's not something that people see and they touch. It's different for like an elementary school or a rec center where they can see themselves experiencing those types. But a lot of our facility needs will be in that category where it would be very hard to go to a referendum and get those votes. So that, that building of the facility reserve fund, I think is going to continue to be a critical strategy for us. We do talk in here about putting more dedicated resources to grant management and working on the state and federal levels to ensure that we're getting, we're competing for as many grants as possible. We largely do that with existing staff capacity right now and that's hard, it's becoming harder and harder to step away from operations and pursue those. So really looking at a dedicated individual or contractor that would be able to help us with that. That would be a short-term objective for us. And then on the longer, on the longer end of things, I do mention local option sales tax, just kind of looking ahead at what you have in the strategic plan and some of your more ambitious goals. Counselor Weiner talked about childcare and we've talked about affordable housing. We've talked about infrastructure, transit service. There's a lot of high-dollar items that could be considered for local option sales tax. We had put that conversation a little bit on the back burner because of the ARPA funds and our focus to want to really execute on those ARPA funds first, but it's something I think the council should, should keep in mind long-term.
Any feedback on the financial section?
I think, I think the idea of having someone who's really dedicated to grant writing is an excellent idea because it's a specific skill. And if you have someone who really knows their way around it, you have, you know, taught, working with department heads and others, I think there's a much, there's a high, high chance of success.
All right. Great. All right. So we're close to wrapping up here. Harrison, I'll have you maybe just pull the PowerPoint up. Everyone. So if you want to, so I also wanted to have, as we're building out your plan, just a quick conversation about how you would envision tracking your progress with respect to the plan, once it's adopted. Something you want to look at quarterly, twice a year, annually?
I think some of it has to do with what, well, projects, we'll look at those individually as they're, you know, coming up. But if we're talking about looking at the entire plan, certainly I would say we could look at it annually just to kind of get an update on what's happened or just for a presentation from staff on where they are. But as projects come up, we're going to be a little bit involved in that. So I guess I would say annually, where we discuss it as a council. And then as projects come up, we're going to naturally be talking about those in work session.
I think there could be some value as well as kind of doing like a crosswalk when we're doing discussions of budget to call out and say, remember, this is something that was in phase one of our strategic plan. Just because, you know, it's taken us two sessions just to get through and winnow down. So I think it will be very useful to have that. I definitely like the annual. I'm the type of person who thinks of repetition as being incredibly helpful. I know that that takes up more time, but maybe the potential of doing it biennial, or not biennial, like twice a year, just so that it's more in mind. Because again, I think that probably the, one of the things that I remember from facilitation as well as some, you know, comments that, conversation that we've had with Jeff is in order to get this work done, we have to be incredibly focused and we have to be actually fairly disciplined. And so I think actually remembering and keeping top of mind what those strategic action items are and what we want them to be makes sense. So annually is fine. I just, I definitely want maybe reminders in there about if we're talking about budget, this is tagged as part of our phase one, or this is phase two. This is not on our strategic plan, things like that, just to help us have some guardrails as far as, as we move forward through funding these things and sort of prioritizing. So.
I have a quick question. Will we be, because being new on the council and this being a bigger process because we're going from three to five years, but do we normally revisit and update the strategic plan every year, every two years? What sort of, I mean, what are we already going to be meeting? And then are you talking about something in addition to that?
So with the two-year plan, really the council set it at the beginning and then staff. We started off doing quarterly reports and over the last couple of years, that's slipped to probably twice a year. With the, with the five-year, when we had the discussion about moving to five-year, I think the council all recognized that it's probably something that we can't just let sit for five years. So I don't know exactly what that time is. Maybe it's at the time of an annual report where you have a dedicated check-in. But I do think a couple of years into this, you should expect that some priorities will shift, right? We'll have something big come up, opportunities, challenges that may need to work its way into this plan to keep it fresh and current. So I think it's very healthy to do that after an election. You get new council members seated, but you may want to do it again annually with your, with an annual report if that's what you want.
The reason I ask was just like when we talk about these updates, like somebody had mentioned doing it every, you know, it's part of the budget cycle process is an update, which is usually in the spring. Those are early winter, maybe late winter, early spring, right? So if we were to do it more than once a year, maybe the six months after that, like separated, was just the kind of way I was thinking. So.
I think having this, just the annual review, right before our typical question in, normally is August, where, you know, what are our priorities? I think that would be a good time to do this annually. And then along with the budget, you know, I think staff is going to be pointing out and pulling out, these are the things that were discussed. So I think that would be a good plan.
Just as far as the format, I've always appreciated in the budget book that we get, there's like the little short interductive narrative sections that always have identified what strategic priorities, you know. And I think, I think with this format, not just for the action items, but kind of the way that it's framed, we'll be able to maybe make clearer connections. And so I hope, I look forward to seeing what that looks like in the budget. And then also just if there's on a, you know, project by project basis, anytime something is on our agenda that is an action item, I would hope that that will be called out and we can kind of honor that in the moment as well.
So I'm hearing perhaps twice a year in August and as part of the budget process, that there'd be kind of conscious check-ins. At that time, would you want any sort of written, like update with respect to specific action items? Or is that just more of a discussion for you?
The annual? Is that what you're asking?
Either of the, either the annual or the budget.
I think to see progress, we would want something written. You know, I don't know that it needs to be anything super complex, but at least as we're framing the sort of phase one, phase two action items, I would imagine we would want to assess that list.
And I recall it was really helpful with, with the whole, our 16 items or whatever it is under Black Lives Matter, to have that, that graphic that allowed us to see where we were in the process for different items.
I agree. I'm kind of a black and white person. I like, I like to see it actually in front of me that this is where we are. This is where we need to go yet. I like that idea.
Great.
Okay. So in terms of our tasks yet to be done, we'll finalize the edits that we had here today. We'll bounce back with staff and try and identify some of those target years and champions. We're going to add, so a little bit more detail in a couple of sections. I'm curious if you had to assign a number at this point with respect to, like, do you think we're 95% of the way there? You know, what percentage would you assign in terms of how comfortable you're feeling with, if we were to incorporate the edits that you've suggested today?
I think we're really close. I'm not going to assign a number, but I think basically we've, you have facilitated us doing the work and I can't wait to see what the finished product looks like.
I'd say 90, 95 to 98. It's just a matter of putting it together and there might be just little.
Sometimes that 5% takes a little longer than you think.
I know. It's like, it's like moving and you think you packed everything up and then you look around.
Yeah.
All right. So we had a few items that we were intending to put in here, one being an alignment crosswalk, which means that for each of your values, we take your action steps and sort of show how it's connecting to your values. And then also we were going to show if it was connecting to the altogether plan and/or envisioned East Central Iowa. Because I know you guys mentioned that connectivity was important. We were going to put the action steps by fiscal year. I don't know. I'm sensing that maybe you guys, phase one and phase two was enough. So maybe we don't need to do that. So we might eliminate that. There were a few items that we had as, we were going to put in as consultant notes. If, I mean, the cool thing about the work that you've done is that every year, you know, you do it and you're building on the previous year, building on the previous year with respect to the strategic plan. So for us, if we were thinking about what we would give as recommendations as to how to get it to the next level, we would suggest perhaps a decision-making framework for when items come up that are not in the plan that you have to address as a council to make sure that you're not, you know, it's so easy to get diverted off in a new direction and kind of forget all this stuff that you had agreed to previously and it's, that is really important and recognizing that time and staff capacity is somewhat limited. So we would encourage you to consider developing something like that. We had talked about metrics early on and the more we looked at the types of action items you were most interested in, which really have a fundamental community impact, we think the best advice we would give you is to think about community-wide metrics in a dashboard that, you know, are really looking at the community overall and what those markers are that you think you want to see, whether it's poverty levels or income levels or that you think would be signs that you're, climate, climate markers that you're kind of hitting not just the city, but through the city and its work with its partners, are kind of taking the whole community as a whole. We think that might be more valuable. So we kind of stepped back from the metrics in here. And then we would recommend that kind of when you got to the phase one, when you're kind of wrapping that up, that it might make sense to do a facilitated process again. Hopefully the, the vision and the strategies are good. And so it's really about just, you know, what have we completed? What's still on the list and what new has popped up and how do we prioritize those things? So I don't know that we need to be nearly as involved as what we went through here, but that would be our suggestion. So.
Great.
And then we just had our last little slide here, which is, you know, nobody wants the plan that's going to sit on a shelf, right? That's, that's not what we want to do. On the other hand, I think to think of plans as these absolute fixed things that never change is unrealistic as well. And so you want to adhere to it, but your environment is going to change and there's always going to need to be some adaptation as you, as you flow through it. And obviously, the last few years have been a classic example of that with COVID and how that threw a wrench in a lot of things. So. And with that, any other feedback you want to give us before we close out here today?
I was having one thought and it was kind of triggered by the well-being category. And that was the, the notion of well-being as it pertains and in a way your community metrics, maybe you were beginning to point in this direction of some of the ways in which well-being, you know, what's the state of well-being of our, of our natural systems in which we live? I mean, there's always this, in a way, the strategic plan seemed to be creating a reality that was distinct from the natural world around us, which is really the foundation of well-being, I would say. So I, and that's where I was kind of hoping to see once again, the whole, the whole thing together. And maybe it's in there, but we have climate action as a, you know, one of our, what is it, you know, main values that we're aware of and cognizant of. But I just began, I've begun to appreciate how climate action itself is in some ways perhaps a limited framework in which to understand the well-being of the natural world in which we live. So anyway, that's, that's just something I was beginning to feel that our, our plans seem to be very human-centric and not capturing this, this broader sense of the world in which we live, which is especially with climate change, but you know, it's biodiversity, it's water quality, it's the condition of our soils and so forth, that are really the long-term, you know, in terms of our long-term resiliency and well-being, that's, that's important to consider.
And we did hear some of that feedback at our last session and I know we tweaked some of that vision language to incorporate the broader ecosystem and the health of that ecosystem. So that'll be something you'll be able to review when we share it back with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been delightful working with you.
Very much.
Thank you.
All right. It is almost 4:45, councilors. I think what we'll do is take a 10-minute break and come back at 4:55. And when we return, if I can, I'll just ask that the University of Iowa students come and give their updates USG. And then after that, we'll go into the presentation of the inclusive economic development plan for Johnson County. Does that sound good? All right. We'll be back in 10 minutes. And we're going to invite University of Iowa Student Government, USG, with updates at this time. Welcome.
Hi, Council. So Ellie couldn't make it to the session, so we would like to request to give our announcements during public comment.
Great. And that'll be fine.
Thank you.
Yep. You just have to keep it under three minutes. All right. We're going to move on to a presentation of the Inclusive Economic Plan, Economic Development Plan for Johnson County. And welcome. Yes.
Thank you. It's great to see everybody here today. Thank you, Council. So I'm very excited today to present to you this final draft. I like to say everything is a draft, so I'm just putting that out there again, of our Inclusive Economic Development Plan. And this has been about a year in production, I guess, would be a good way of putting it. And mouse, sorry, not a touchpad, it's a mouse. Ooh, okay. I'll do this. How about that? Nope, I won't do that. I'll do this. Okay. Technical difficulties. Here we go. So just going to give you some, you know, who we are, what we've been doing, what we've heard and findings and recommendations. I know everybody is really eager to hear that, but we also want to get some context as to what we've been doing. So V-Fix MoRise, CEO and founder of Astig Planning. And I'm also joined here by my colleague, Azmita Podal, who's been instrumental in putting this together. We have a lot of partners. You can see them here. We've also got a lot of focus group coordinators that have done incredible work. So I just want to say thank you to all of our sponsors, all of everybody who has been involved so far. So an Inclusive Economic Development Plan in Johnson County is a, we like to think of it as a collaboration between everybody that we've been working with that focuses specifically on underestimated businesses in Iowa City. That is the fundamental difference in this plan. And as you can see, we talk about uplifting the existing and ongoing plans. Certainly this isn't happening in a vacuum, so we want to make sure that we're talking and speaking across other municipal plans that are happening concurrently. Our process, this whole timeline, really, as I said, it's been about a year. So last November, I know we were kind of ideating and putting things together and researching and then we kind of kicked things off. We had our surveys, our focus groups, we worked through the summer, did a strategic toing session, and then have been working on putting together this plan ever since. And when I say that, I don't mean to say that, you know, our team has just been like, you know, massaging our keyboards. I mean that like we were, we were going back out into the communities and saying, hey, can you verify this? What do you think about these, you know, this collection of data? These are the findings that we're finding. Does this resonate with you? So it's not to say that we've just been, you know, typing amongst ourselves these past few months, but have really been trying to verify things. So who did we hear from? This is just for the survey. We had about 105 total respondents and I just want to say briefly that we are talking about underestimated community business owners. So those are folks that are actually really hard to get a hold of. You can't just send an online survey and they take it, right? So we had to do door knocking. We did translations. We had translators walk with us to businesses. We went multiple times. We went at different times. We went to every city council in the county and asked them if they would help us identify these business owners. So these 105 respondents are like gold to us. And so it's not to take it lightly. And you can see there, we had about 63 existing owners, 17 emerging businesses, and then we had 24 business support institutions. And those support institutions are obviously like our local governments, but also other nonprofits that work in this area, and then lenders and funders. I think it's really key that process matters. And so throughout this plan, we continually asked ourselves, are we being accessible? Are we being inclusive? And so in order to do that, our surveys, our conversations, our focus groups, we asked open-ended questions. We let people write things in. And that makes a real difference, and I think not only when they're taking the survey, but then as you can see the results. We had 25 different races that were identified, 29 different ethnicities that were identified. You're just not going to see that kind of robust identification and as we know, that matters. And so people feeling seen throughout this process was incredibly important to us. So that's, it's exciting to see. And you have multi-ethnic, you have Asian, you have Christian. I mean, just how people are identifying with their, with their groups, with their people. Some of the outreach highlights, and here are some, you know, fun pictures of our focus groups that we had. We worked with, you know, the diversity markets, we worked with Center for Worker Justice and all different kinds of folks. And so it was great to have people come together and the Colectivo de Mujeres, just to have these sessions in native languages with interpreters for those that are English-speaking. I just invite every person to have that experience in their life. And as planners, we felt really fortunate to be able to do so. It's very humbling, but it's also creates a, a place of safety and bravery that people can be their more authentic selves, that their culture is seen and heard. So down to the data, one thing that we really wanted to highlight are to dispel some mythology. So a lot of times people say, oh, immigrant-owned businesses or BIPOC-owned businesses, they don't have a lot of education. Not in this county. That's not true. We can see that over 50% have at least undergraduate, and then you can even see spilling over into masters and PhD degrees. So just trying to demystify some of this as well is really important. And then the rent costs, the rent costs. Also, when we look at some of the barriers in Johnson County, and this is something that we know across the county, rent costs are one of those really huge barriers. So typically you don't want to see anything over 20%. I think residential, we think 30%, right? I don't want to be paying more than 30% for rent. But it's 20% for commercial and you can see how staggering it is that over half of businesses are spending more than that. And so that's a real barrier. I also wanted to make sure that we're not just showing you data, that we're also providing you with some language, you know? What inspired community businesses to, to want to thrive here? A lot of people talked about wanting to be with their children. It's very culturally accepted to have your children around you while you're at work and on other places. And also wanting to serve their people, you know, having the markets, having the sharing their culture with Johnson County residents and building that generational wealth, building that financial literacy. I had so many parents talk about passing on how to read a checkbook to their kids. So that, that's some of those reasons right there. In terms of financial resources, this is where we see some of the differences. So obviously emerging businesses are going to have some, you know, higher startup costs than maybe existing businesses, but it matters where they're looking for that, those resources. And we're also talking about financial literacy. We're talking about all these kinds of things that really buy into actual financial resources. And so ICAT is seen as that, the Business Partnership, you'll see, but there is also some, some nuances. So for instance, the Multicultural Development Center of Iowa's BIPOC Accelerator Program, they do offer financial resources and yet, and it's BIPOC-owned and led, and yet not many people know about it. So it's interesting to see where people are gravitating towards. Obviously, it's a newer program. You're looking to more established organizations. Also, good to know that people are using these resources when they need them. Here's again, some of those, the language that people were using. So some people having to sell their truck to make money for the business. I'll tell you, time and time again, I heard that is, for many cultures, just culturally inappropriate to go into debt. There is just so, there's like a visceral, you can almost see people change their body when they talk about having to go take out a loan. They will do anything to not do that. And so there's some, you know, financial literacy that needs to go into that, but also a real understanding of why it takes these businesses so long to get off the ground and what they're willing to do and sacrifice in order to make that happen. So you'll see a lot of gathering capital of their own accord. But then you'll also see, on the flip side of that, a fear of actually going into those banks, going into the city, like into the city buildings or county buildings, because they don't feel accepted. They're, they feel very intimidated. And that could be the documents that they're looking at or the person that's literally in the desk in front of them, just feeling very inaccessible. So some of those resources that act as barriers, I think a lot of this was pretty well, you know, guessed, but rent costs, as we saw, is, is huge, access to money clearly, and then the location. So the, the commercial rental space is, is certainly key. But you also see things like, you know, access to childcare, things like legal services, accounting, those types of services that people just literally don't know where to go. And so that becomes a barrier. And, and language and things like that. So when we look on the other side and we start talking to our business support institutions, we ask them, well, are you, do you have these programs? And so people say, no, not only do we not have those programs, but the ones that we do, we can't really take that, we can't take that type of information in. So like banks lending information is, is, it's just really hard to have any type of discernible demographic data attached to that. There's some requirements, but they're very vague and they're very much so. And welcome. Yes.
Thank you. It's great to see everybody here today. Thank you, Council. So I'm very excited today to present to you this final draft. I like to say everything is a draft, so I'm just putting that out there again, of our Inclusive Economic Development Plan. And this has been about a year in production, I guess, would be a good way of putting it. And mouse, sorry, not a touchpad, it's a mouse. Ooh, okay. I'll do this. How about that? Nope, I won't do that. I'll do this. Okay. Technical difficulties. Here we go. So just going to give you some, you know, who we are, what we've been doing, what we've heard and findings and recommendations. I know everybody is really eager to hear that, but we also want to get some context as to what we've been doing. So VFXMORise, CEO and founder of Astig Planning, and I'm also joined here by my colleague, Azmita Podal, who's been instrumental in putting this together. We have a lot of partners. You can see them here. We've also got a lot of focus group coordinators that have done incredible work. So I just want to say thank you to all of our sponsors, all of everybody who has been involved so far. So an inclusive economic development plan in Johnson County is a we like to think of it as a collaboration between everybody that we've been working with that focuses specifically on underestimated businesses in Iowa City. That is the fundamental difference in this plan. And as you can see, we talk about uplifting the existing and ongoing plans. Certainly, this isn't happening in a vacuum, so we want to make sure that we're talking and speaking across other municipal plans that are happening concurrently. Our process, this whole timeline, really, as I said, it's been about a year. So last November, I know we were kind of ideating and putting things together and researching, and then we kind of kicked things off. We had our surveys, our focus groups, we worked through the summer, did a strategic doing session, and then have been working on putting together this plan ever since. And when I say that, I don't mean to say that, you know, our team has just been like, you know, massaging our keyboards. I mean that like we were, we were going back out into the communities and saying, hey, can you verify this? What do you think about these, you know, this collection of data? These are the findings that we're finding. Does this resonate with you? So it's not to say that we've just been, you know, typing amongst ourselves these past few months, but have really been trying to verify things. So who did we hear from? This is just for the survey. We had about 105 total respondents, and I just want to say briefly that we are talking about underestimated community business owners. So those are folks that are actually really hard to get a hold of. You can't just send an online survey and they take it, right? So we had to do door knocking. We did translations. We had translators walk with us to businesses. We went multiple times. We went at different times. We went to every city council in the county and asked them if they would help us identify these business owners. So these 105 respondents are like gold to us. And so it's not to take it lightly. And you can see there, we had about 63 existing owners, 17 emerging businesses, and then we had 24 business support institutions. And those support institutions are obviously like our local governments, but also other nonprofits that work in this area, and then lenders and funders. I think it's really key that process matters. And so throughout this plan, we continually asked ourselves, are we being accessible? Are we being inclusive? And so in order to do that, our surveys, our conversations, our focus groups, we asked open-ended questions. We let people write things in. And that makes a real difference, and I think not only when they're taking the survey, but then as you can see the results. We had 25 different races that were identified, 29 different ethnicities that were identified. You're just not going to see that kind of robust identification, and as we know, that matters. And so people feeling seen throughout this process was incredibly important to us. So that's exciting to see. And you have multi-ethnic, you have Asian, you have Christian. I mean, just how people are identifying with their, with their groups, with their people. Some of the outreach highlights, and here are some, you know, fun pictures of our focus groups that we had. We worked with, you know, the diversity markets. We worked with Center for Worker Justice.
Elder Bernie.
And all different kinds of folks. And so it was great to have people come together. And the Colectivo de Mujeres, just to have these sessions in native languages with interpreters for those that are English-speaking, I just invite every person to have that experience in their life. And as planners, we felt really fortunate to be able to do so. It's very humbling, but it's also creates a place of safety and bravery that people can be their more authentic selves, that their culture is seen and heard. So down to the data, one thing that we really wanted to highlight are to dispel some mythology. So a lot of times, people say, oh, immigrant-owned businesses or BIPOC-owned businesses, they don't have a lot of education. Not in this county. That's not true. We can see that over 50% have at least undergraduate, and then you can even see spilling over into masters and PhD degrees. So just trying to demystify some of this as well is really important. And then the rent costs, the rent costs. Also, when we look at some of the barriers in Johnson County, and this is something that we know across the county, rent costs are one of those really huge barriers. So typically, you don't want to see anything over 20%. I think residential, we think 30%, right? I don't want to be paying more than 30% for rent. But it's 20% for commercial, and you can see how staggering it is that over half of businesses are spending more than that. And so that's a real barrier. I also wanted to make sure that we're not just showing you data, that we're also providing you with some language, you know, what inspired community businesses to want to thrive here. A lot of people talked about wanting to be with their children. It's very culturally accepted to have your children around you while you're at work and on other places. And also wanting to serve their people, you know, having the markets, having the sharing their culture with Johnson County residents, and building that generational wealth, building that financial literacy. I had so many parents talk about passing on how to read a checkbook to their kids. So that, that's some of those reasons right there. In terms of financial resources, this is where we see some of the differences. So obviously, emerging businesses are going to have some, you know, higher startup costs than maybe existing businesses, but it matters where they're looking for that, those resources. And we're also talking about financial literacy. We're talking about all these kinds of things that really buy into actual financial resources. And so ICAT is seen as that, the Business Partnership, you'll see. But there is also some, some nuances. So for instance, the Multicultural Development Center of Iowa's BIPOC Accelerator Program, they do offer financial resources, and yet, and it's BIPOC-owned and led, and yet not many people know about it. So it's interesting to see where people are gravitating towards. Obviously, it's a newer program. You're looking to more established organizations. Also, good to know that people are using these resources when they need them. Here's again, some of those, the language that people were using. So some people having to sell their truck to make money for the business. I'll tell you, time and time again, I heard that is, for many cultures, just culturally inappropriate to go into debt. There is just so, there's like a visceral, you can almost see people change their body when they talk about having to go take out a loan. They will do anything to not do that. And so there's some, you know, financial literacy that needs to go into that, but also a real understanding of why it takes these businesses so long to get off the ground, and what they're willing to do and sacrifice in order to make that happen. So you'll see a lot of gathering capital of their own accord. But then you also see, on the flip side of that, a fear of actually going into those banks, going into the city, like into the city buildings or county buildings, because they don't feel accepted. They feel very intimidated. And that could be the documents that they're looking at, or the person that's literally in the desk in front of them, just feeling very inaccessible. So some of those resources that act as barriers, I think a lot of this was pretty well, you know, guessed, but rent costs, as we saw, is huge, access to money, clearly, and then the location. So the commercial rental space is certainly key. But you also see things like, you know, access to childcare, things like legal services, accounting, those types of services that people just literally don't know where to go. And so that becomes a barrier. And language and things like that. So when we look on the other side, and we start talking to our business support institutions, we ask them, well, are you, do you have these programs? And so people say, no, not only do we not have those programs, but the ones that we do, we can't really take that, we can't take that type of information in. So like banks lending information is, it's just really hard to have any type of discernible demographic data attached to that. There's some requirements, but they're very vague, and they're very much so observational. And so that makes it hard to know where we are if we're not collecting that data. But also, a lot of these programs have only been around because of COVID. And so the real sense that people feel is that, no, they're not around. These programs don't actually serve underestimated businesses. And do they provide loans? So obviously, if the programs aren't there, there's not going to be loans. It's hard to track. One thing that really stood out to us, too, is that nobody's doing any surveying. Nobody even just has like, when you're filling out this application, you know, identify any economic data or racial data, or whatever that may be. Oftentimes, this is sensitive, and we understand that. It just makes it hard for us to do our job in the end, in terms of who's being served and how. Where do people get information? That's incredibly important. When we look at underestimated businesses and communities, we really look at people using word of mouth, friends and family, social media. And when you look at the flip side of institutions, it's like, where do they put that information out? Some of it is social media, but a lot of it is their websites. And people just don't go to those websites. And so what we're trying to show is, there needs to be a shift, a shift away from just, well, we put this on our website, so it's good to go, and shifting towards, did you print it out and put it in the barbershop? Did you put it in the lavandaria? Like, did you go and actually get out into the community in ways that people interact with this? Because that is really the gap. And we kind of knew that, but now this really shows that that is absolutely the case. And one thing that is a little bit disheartening about it is that if things aren't being directly communicated, they're being communicated through word of mouth, and word of mouth can be misleading, and can be, you know, really hearsay. And so that was another thing that we heard a lot, was a real desire for that direct communication. So language access is a really big issue. And you can see that, you know, do support institutions provide information in any other language? No, large part, no. I think Iowa City actually does a pretty good job of doing it. But when you actually look at the languages that are being spoken in Johnson County, according to ACS data, it's Mandarin, French, and Spanish, and you only currently see some Spanish in most lending institutions and most of these business support institutions. So. And also, just want to note that it's not that you just want to have a document translated in another language. You need to have that, like, follow-up person that can answer and read that and help that person in those ways, right? So we're not just talking about a one-and-done. We're really talking about like a dynamic interaction. So, but we can take small steps. One thing that was really important, I know, was trying to understand if people received relief for COVID impacts. And I will say, this gets a little bit tricky, because oftentimes, I'd say about 30% didn't know if they even qualified. And I, as a small business owner, understand why, okay? It was very confusing. If you didn't have an accountant, there was really no way to know. And so most people just thought they didn't qualify. I even thought I didn't qualify, to be honest. So you have about a third of people that are saying that they did receive funding, you know, about 60% saying, no, they didn't. We even tried to say, if you didn't receive funding, why? And most people just said, I don't know. So maybe there wasn't any follow-up with them. So there's that. And then we have some funding that was provided specifically for BIPOC businesses that were impacted by COVID, and that was through Better Together, and that was $50,000 for 33 BIPOC-owned businesses. I want to characterize that briefly by saying, $50,000 for 33 businesses? I mean, they, it's, there's something, you know, and they were like $1,000 to $5,000. When you look at the millions of dollars that Iowa received for federal PPP funding, it just pales in comparison. So I know that there's certainly lessons learned from COVID, and this is certainly a space that could be expanded upon. So solutions and opportunities, and we definitely go into this more in the plan, the draft plan. So one-on-one mentorship was huge. When you have underestimated businesses, they're trying to navigate a sea of, you know, finances and legal terms and things like that. So having a mentor that was like them, that has been through this, is a game-changer, because it's a hand-holding that can really only be done in that same way, and somebody that has experienced those same barriers and workarounds. So that one-on-one mentorship was seen as very crucial. Classes, affordable spaces, community grants, having a sense of community. So Colectivo de Mujeres Negocios, they recently changed their name, so I'm still trying to learn it. But what I love about that group is it started out as a support group for Latinx women who wanted to open a business, right? And you can see how that is so needed, because you're completely siloed. As, you know, business owner wanting to start off, you're just like, where do I go? How do I even navigate? So it's incredible to see that they knew they needed that community, and they came together. And you'll see that in our recommendations. So street vending opportunities came up a lot, and that is really cultural. Street vending around the world is very different than it is in the United States. And it's not that street vendors don't want to follow the rules. They do. They just want to know what they are, and of course, they would appreciate a little bit more flexibility. But they're very much so rule followers. I just want to make that clear. Low-interest loans, and we have some descriptors specifically for that. And then, again, that consolidated information on permits in multiple languages, like, a lot of consolidated information would actually be really helpful to kind of get away from that word of mouth. And then access to the community commercial kitchen. That came up literally in every focus group that we talked with. What I wanted to touch on for a second was this equity perception. So we asked people in the survey, you know, to create equity and opportunity for all, I believe a greater portion of resources should go to those who are most in need. And you'll see, there's a big swing to the right, and that is very heartening. It means that most people are like, yeah, I strongly agree with that, whether you're an underestimated business owner or you're a support institution. So we're headed in the right direction, literally. So that's good. And I think that that showcases the potentiality that we have with this plan. So what we heard, in terms of barriers, to be more specific, cost of rent, gaps in resource information, lack of access or perceived lack of access to financial banking systems, a hostile business support system environment, lack of access to childcare, short supply of business mentors, and missing those relationships with business support systems. If anybody has ever owned a small business or known anybody that's owned a small business, you know that that relationship to that banker, to that accountant, to that lawyer, is a lifeline. There may be questions that come up, or a COVID relief that comes through, and you need to be able to call somebody, like a human, not Wells Fargo. And quite frankly, many people just gravitate towards Chase Bank, because it's just what's out there. It's the big banks, you know? So that can cause barriers. We did culminate a strategic doing session, and thank you for those that were able to attend. I know you all can't be there at the same time. So we did have a lot of local government leaders, staff, business support institutions, lending institution, nonprofits, and of course, local vendors. And I have to say that sharing that space with those people in the, in those four hours that we were together was just an incredible moment to have street vendors who were talking, who were like at the table with the city administrator, the mayors, and vice versa. That the questions that, you know, city council may have, there's somebody there who can answer that, like, very acutely and specifically. And the aspirational quote, which I really just appreciate, is, imagine a robust entrepreneurial community in Johnson County that authentically welcomes and empowers underestimated business owners with a sense of belonging throughout all stages of business and idea development. That wraparound is really what we're talking about. We did come up with three Pathfinder projects, and I am thrilled to say that all three of them have moved forward and have been a success. And that is just very rare. So we have a mobile food vendor portal, which Iowa City is a part of, along with Coralville and North Liberty. And so we're moving forward on trying to get these three cities, plus Johnson County Public Health, to have very clear guidelines and protocol, and that they report back, that you can click on one and go to the other. Because oftentimes, vendors are like, well, where do I go to get this information? So just trying to even make that clearer. The Johnson County Inclusive Business Education Series, they're actually kicking off at the end of October with Financial Literacy for Latinx Community. And so they're having a couple of series of speakers, and I'm sure they'll be getting information out. So if you'd like to attend, you could certainly welcome. And then the Underestimated Mentorship Program is also moving forward. MDC Iowa currently has a mentorship platform. They're trying to get support around and wraparound to provide to more people. And so that's BIPOC-led and four. And so that feels, that's really moving forward as well. So I feel like if anybody's ever done strategic doing, that's pretty amazing. All three, way to go. Okay. Our recommendations. So the number one recommendation that we have is creating neighborhood-level multicultural business hubs. And the reason because it reduces a lot of those barriers. You're in your community, you can just walk or bike to it. You know those people. You have those experts, people who look like you, talking your same language, who have professional background, or at least can give you access to that professional knowledge that you seek. And then we also have, you know, financial literacy programs that can happen there. Maybe there's already a commercial kitchen that people can use. But we really believe in what the model that is a bit more disaggregated and embedded within the communities. And that also is supported by the Better Together Project. And so that feels very authentic here. We have behind-the-scenes support, and then we have public-facing support. And I'm going to go into some of these a little bit more. The plan really goes into a lot of them very in-depth, and I want to definitely watch my time here, so I have time for a lot of questions. But a lot of changes in policies and procedures, internal work, and then bolstering the entities and organizations that are already doing the work. And then sort of externally, providing those resources, but then also building the infrastructure is generally how we have this broken out. I will just say that specifically for Iowa City, we did a very, like, general look at what were your ARPA goals, so that we could kind of match some of this. And based on the public input that you all had received and staff recommendations, along with your strategic plan, which you're redoing, but 2020 to 2021 at least, it aligns with those as well. So when you look at the promote an inclusive or resilient economy through, throughout the city. So the recommendations that you had gotten from staff, these were the four that were provided back a year ago. And so we embedded that with ours. So the neighborhood-level multicultural business chamber hubs is that physical space. And I just want to note that when we say multicultural, because it's really easy, business chamber hubs, we don't want to say that every, every chamber hub is multicultural. We're just saying that, like, could be Latinx, could be Hispanic, could be Asian, whatever it is, whatever is needed within that community, that's what it should be. So I just wanted to clarify that. But as you can see, it reduces those barriers. You already have that trust, a centralized information source. And then you can have those mentorship programs, and, you know, increasing those direct access to federal and local funds. Because we see this not as a bypass from business support institutions, but literally itself, its own business support institution. So it has direct access to those federal and state funds. And then access to the low- or no-cost commercial kitchen space. This could also be a place where there's neighborhood-level access to mobile vendor spaces as well. The second recommendation was the Youth Entrepreneurial and Community Center Accelerator Programs. So we really felt like supporting those current BIPOC-led business support institutions that are already doing this is really where we could see this fitting in. And they're, they're already current programs. They're future programs. There's a lot of opportunity for the businesses that are already, the organizations that are already doing this to do more. One thing that would be really helpful is to reduce duplicative professional service expenses across these support organizations. And really, that's looking at, you know, access to the accounting, customer service, insurance, liability providers. Not necessarily saying that the city funds that, but helps set up the system. Because these organizations, I mean, let's be real, we're talking about MDC Iowa, we're talking about Tracy John, we're talking about CWJ, we're talking about Mazaher. Like, they're just one or two people doing this. They don't have the bandwidth or the capacity to actually create the system. And then helping assist with transparent and recurrent evaluations to help do what I just said, basically, because they don't have the capacity to help support those partnerships. We do feel that there is certain criteria, though, when we look at which institutions could receive the fundings to, for current and future programs and things. This might be helpful, and it's certainly a starting point. This isn't the be-all, end-all, but this is one idea. So if you have just two criteria, which is that you have a proven record of established economic development, the number of years in service plus good standing with the city, and then two, you actually provide those services. So you do funding and lending programs, or you host the economic development programs. We really want to stress that these are the current organizations that we have been talking to, that we have been working with. But it is not limited to these organizations. We hope that we could get the opportunity to even broaden that even further. It's just through the work that we've been doing, this is who we've been communicating with. We don't know everybody. So our hope is that we get to know more people. The startup and expansion grants, so create local government procedures for funding and loan programs. We found that there were specific things that kept coming up time and time and time again, that were increasing the borrowing amount, creating more time before the first payment, and no interest in the first year. So whenever people were getting funding, they were like, well, how am I supposed to pay this first payment? I haven't even got two clients, you know? So it just, the turnaround time was too quick. The community navigator, we really see this as community networking, and certainly could be a person, or it could be a system. So improving those networks of support between those local governments and existing organizations. So that's accountability, transparent evaluation, and then supporting the evolution of those partnerships. And that could happen through streamlining that communication. That is to say that, like, these mentorship programs, getting all of this started and off the ground, we know it's going to take a person, it's going to take something to get there. It's not just going to happen overnight. You know, we need to look at how do we create that system. So that's community networking. And then we also have behind-the-scenes recommendations. So that internal work, clear city permitting, county licensing, and then, of course, the more affordable commercial rental spaces through creative ordinances is potential. The internal work, so recognizing and legitimizing multicultural planning perspectives. This Black Space Manifesto is created by black planning professionals, and it's clickable, so I definitely recommend checking it out. And then require anti-racism training that integrates reconciliation, healing, and learning. So a lot of times, people feel like, oh, I'm going to be doing this training, and I'm going to have to check the box, and I'm going to have to, like, do the worksheet. That's not what we're talking about. We're really talking about creating a culture of care that's centered on truth-telling and reconciliation, that addresses harm or trauma in safer, braver spaces. So it's, it's more transformative than just that. And we do have some recommendations in the plan. And then incorporating multicultural and multilingual design elements in office and public spaces. It's amazing how much of a difference it makes people feel when there's like multiple, like, all the country flags, or like, welcome in multiple languages. I mean, these sound very silly, but they're actually really important, and do generate a, at least an inkling of something else is different here. So. The more affordable commercial rental spaces through those creative ordinances, you could look at adaptive reuse assessment and ordinances, as well as commercial overlay districts. So there's examples all over the country that could be utilized. But really looking at how do we revitalize and rehabilitate some of these vacant properties, especially post-COVID or post-COVID, but just where we're at in COVID. There's certainly opportunity there. And then the clearer city permitting and county licensing processes. So we've already started doing this with the Pathfinder project, but really wanting to note that street vendors and mobile vendors really feel like it's a very confusing system, and it's not in multiple languages at all. So there's some movement there. What we see as our next steps is continuing to support our Pathfinder projects that are wrapping up here in the, in the foreseeable future. And then also offer to create specific action items and steps for cities and counties. We already did kind of a high-level ARPA funding mashing together. But we would love to get together more robust forms of recommendations after convening underestimated business owners, working with staff, saying, here's the funding, this is what it could go through, you know, working through all of the details to actually come up with an actual proposal. So we feel as though we've done a lot of this initial work. We do have a lot of connections and access to these inclusive, or I'm sorry, to these underestimated business owners. Not that we have to be the ones, but as was stated, just, I don't know, maybe an hour ago, nobody wants a plan to sit on a shelf, and this plan is too important. So.
It's important, yeah.
Thank you.
Amen.
Great.
Ready for some questions. Thank you.
Bravo, bravo. What'd you think, Bruce?
All right, Council.
You're looking at your computer all the time. You were looking at your computer all the time last evening.
We can ask questions at this point and give comments. And thank you for the presentation. And I do recognize that some of the partners are here as well, so thanks to you all for being here as well.
V, is it possible to categorize the types of businesses that you made contact with?
Well, um...
Types of services, in other words, you know, what sector of the economy are they coming from?
Yeah, I would say, just off the top of my head, I mean, sure, we could do that in the focus groups. Our survey was anonymous, and we did that to gain trust. I think that we're hopeful that we can follow up and have, create more relationships. But I would have to say that probably what we heard from was more food service, construction-type businesses. So retail, yeah. That would probably be my guess on that.
One reason I was asking is, and I don't even know if it's possible to do this, but if, there are a lot of large employers in Johnson County, and say, the city of Iowa City, would it be possible for the city of Iowa City to have, you know, incentives in place to, with its contracts, to be able to provide, you know, to contract with some of the businesses, say, that you were meeting with, where they had, you know, certain advantages with respect to the bidding process, you know? I know that some cities have that.
Mm-hmm.
I know San Francisco had it. They had local and minority and women-owned business preferences in their contract negotiations. So that seemed to me, you know, again, I don't know if that's possible, but having, you know, companies that can purchase your services, whatever they may happen to be, seemed to me one, another option or potential way of promoting these businesses.
Definitely. I believe that Quad Cities has done that with their construction contracts. So that's the closest example that I know of.
Okay.
And I believe Redmond was really instrumental in that, so if I would have some more information on exactly how to do that, because they did a study, and then the study was able to back up that they could do it. So there is precedent for that, at least in the construction.
Good. Yeah, construction would be a great one.
Yeah, definitely.
Did you have any interaction with the university, or any sense of how the university could be a part of this?
Yes. So our, we reached out to the university throughout the entire process, and they did, they are engaging us in the strategic doing session in particular. And so they have had a lot of interaction there. And I think there's always more possibility with the University of Iowa, and we certainly have their ear. So I think pulling them in would not be difficult. Yep.
This is a phenomenal and really thorough dive into this that just peels back layers and layers, and that you didn't rest on the one layer, and you're like, okay, what's going on underneath this is just tremendous, and thank you for that. I think we're going to be in a much better position to move forward because of this work. One of the questions that I had has to do with sort of having the business support, the multicultural business hubs. And you have, again, you said it's not limited to the specific organizations that you have. But I'm kind of wondering, because they all have their primary vision and purpose and mission as well, do you feel that there's a pipeline for the expertise and the mentorship and the support that is necess, it seems to be such a crucial piece to helping, you know, these small business owners go to the next level? So that then they, I recognize, success breeds success, and support breeds support. And so the very people who might be helped now may find themselves in a place where they're like, and now I want to help along. But I'm wondering, from the outset, is this just sort of one of those things where it'll move kind of in a ripple effect and kind of build momentum? Or, I guess, I'm just wondering about the sort of the ratio of expertise and those people who have been there, done that, and can help those who need that help. Do you feel like there's enough of that within the community, or places where you might be able to seek out additional supports? And maybe, where's the flexibility in that? Because that's the part that concerns me is, you know, you need to have the expertise and the success in order to be able to provide that mentorship and that. Or maybe it is, like, we'll learn it together, as you said, with that group that came together. So anyway, if you can talk a little bit about that.
Absolutely. No, it's a really great question, because it's sort of this, like, chicken and egg, right? It's like, do we have BIPOC lawyers in abundance? No, not really. Like, but how are we going to get there? Well, they have to be able to see themselves there, and we do have a few. And so I think that the answer to your question is really yes. I think that those resources, those people are in our community. They don't feel valued, they don't feel seen, and they don't feel like they can get a job working in a place where they can be their authentic selves. So, not to speak for them, I mean, I feel like I can a little bit, but I think from what I've heard and seen, it's almost like everybody's waiting in the wings. Like, this plan, definitely reaching out to folks, really, you started to see just how many people were behind the people in front of you. And it, I think, is really exemplified in the fact that we have so many organizations that are working in, you know, multicultural development, really. I mean, you have Latinx population, you have Sudanese population, you have Black population. I mean, that's pretty robust. And Chinese. So we did a, we did a pretty good job of outreach. My team knows, we talk about this all the time, we can always do better. We didn't reach everybody. In fact, there's a section in here on lessons learned. We could have done a better outreach to the Asian community. There's just only a staff of four, you know? So I think that lessons learned, absolutely, if we get more people involved, if we start rolling down this hill, we're going to, we're going to be a big boulder by the end. Like, it's definitely the time, is how it feels.
You brought up some of the partners, which Mayor Brothim just alluded to, such as the Multicultural Development Center of Iowa, Center for Workarounds Justice of Eastern Iowa, just to name a few. And what I do know is that a lot of people, myself included, get sent there, or, you know, someone will call and say, how can I get assistance for whatever? And typically, those are two of the people that I send them to, because their scope has, and their arm has been so broad to assist in people. So one of the, I think one of my questions is, when this does continue to play out, how, because there's financial elements to it, there is grant, you know, grants, because there's agencies that get federal grants, or that, and there's also, I'm blanking on the name, of when people can become a part of a program, if you're a minority-owned business. But there's programs out there that people can be placed. And so when you talk about the technical assistance, is that a part of what could happen, is matching them up with some of those resources that they may qualify?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, definitely. Obviously, I think I know what you're saying, so we're currently talking about ARPA funding, but there's funding beyond that. Is that, like, what you're...
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. How do you maximize your, you know, the funds? That, because there will never be enough...
Yeah.
...to meet the needs, right?
Correct.
And then the other question, I'm curious to know how other communities or cities, municipalities within the county have been receptive to this process?
It has varied, and I think that, you know, through this process, really wanting to honor that every city is different in Johnson County. And so, especially when you're talking about economic development, and particularly focusing on underestimated community members, to be honest, I think there's a lot of education. I mean, I think that that was kind of one of the first things that we learned was, you know, what does that mean? What does underestimated mean? And, you know, what does BIPOC mean? And so I think there's some education there that had to happen initially, which I think probably made it a little bit harder to, like, communicate and to understand, you know, what we're doing and what we're asking people to do, which, when we went to cities, we asked them to help us, basically. Like, your leaders in your community, you may even be business owners, do you know any people who are women, or immigrants, or anybody who started businesses? And I think the vast majority of towns have been, like, very curious, which is really all we're asking. And there were a few that were less curious. So, yeah, that's how...
Thank you.
You started to touch on that, V, with the educational component, but what other challenges did you identify? Or can you kind of talk us through when we're thinking about some of these recommendations?
Yeah, I don't think that there really is a sense of, like, diversity that is felt in some communities, and so there's not really a valuation of that. And so I don't know how else to say that. But I think that that's some of what we were feeling, is that there's a homogeneity here that we are just not going to invest in something that we don't see, or that we, you know, it's hard to value what you don't see or understand. And so I think education is, like, the first thing, but then also wanting to make sure... So my staff and myself are underestimated people. So like, I also have to recognize that they're looking at us, and we're looking at them. We're asking them to really take a hard look at their community. And so that may just not be what people want to do. And I think we felt some of that, if I'm being honest.
Interesting.
But vast majority, though, let me just really state, vast majority of Johnson County, very curious, very willing. In smaller towns, that you just would not even anticipate that, very welcoming, you know?
And did you get the sense that that was the case, or that there were some communities that are sort of in transition? They may not have thought about this very much before, but when they start to think about it, they realize, hey, yeah, we do have people representing this group, that group, the other group. Maybe we ought to be able to figure out a way to push them forward.
There definitely was that, and then there was others. Like, so I think that there's a gradation. There's certainly people that are just not really, or they're just not there yet, which is not there yet, and that's okay. There are towns that are absolutely going through transition and booming transition. And so, and curious, like, oh, I hadn't thought about that. So that's really heartening. And I think that, like I said, the vast majority of people were interested in what does this mean, what are you talking about? And I think a lot of times, people are just like, well, what do you want? And really, all we were asking for was just access to, because we understand as underestimated people that, like, it's, you know, who am I, coming from Iowa City, or, you know what I mean? Like, so we were just hoping to have some buy-in, some, like, I'm going to meet your friend, you know, kind of thing. But, yeah, I'd say absolutely, there are several towns that are going through a lot of transition in Johnson County. And so they, very much so, are curious, what does this mean? Yeah. Great questions.
Echoing everybody else's, thank you for doing this work. Also, could you just speak a little bit more about, you know, you'd said that, as you correctly pointed out, nobody wants to create a plan, then see it collect dust on a shelf. What do you see as the, you know, next round of steps, or next things for yourself, or for partners, on something?
Yeah, absolutely. So we are going to every cities and the county that would like to hear back about the plan. And we did go to all of the cities, pretty much, almost all of them. And so our hope is that, so it doesn't sit on a shelf, is that we get to return to this with the cities and the county and say, okay, now that we know these recommendations, now that we know this data, you know, where does this fit with your funding priorities, with your strategic plans? Like, how do we move forward? Because I think that what's really great is that there is a lot of momentum and interest, and particularly with ARPA funding, that there is this, like, well, what do we do with it now that we have it? And we're hopeful that this plan can show, like, well, there's internal work that needs to be done, and also, there's a lot of barriers that need to be removed. And the multicultural, like, chamber, neighborhood-level hubs are what we, the amalgamation of all the things that we heard, really, that it could be a direct funnel for funding, that it could have all of the people that look like them, and, you know, also, those professional experts, they could walk there. You know, all of these things were incorporated really, truly in that. There's obviously ordinances, and there's, like, all other kinds of stuff, but that is a big one. And recognizing that there's lots of partners in that, particularly in a city like Iowa City, Coralville, North Liberty, there's nonprofits, there's community leaders. And I see our team at this point, and again, I never want to say that, like, we have to be the only one, since we have been doing this work, we have, we convene people, you know? We want, we know folks, and we like to know folks we don't know. And we want to make sure that as many people as possible are together on this, because it is a game changer to have some funding like this come through our town and our county, and making sure that it's uplifting in ways that are helpful. So that's what our hope is.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we really appreciate you being here today...
Yeah.
...and presenting all of this information. Sound like there's been a lot of work happening, and a lot of work to continue, and we're just happy to be a part of this process, even at this level. So thanks for what you do, and I'm sure we'll hear from you some more.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Before we move on, I do see, I think we should be able to get through our agenda. We'll just trailblaze through. So clarification of agenda items. So USG, get ready.
Didn't they say they wanted to come at the beginning?
She's here now.
Elizabeth is here.
Yeah. All right, we'll move on to information packet discussion for September 8. And we're going to welcome USG at this time to give us updates. All right, welcome.
Hi, Counsel.
Hi, Counsel. All right, to start off, we recently had our executives go to the Board of Regents meeting, where they discuss mental health, basic student needs, and the way to incentivize students to stay in Iowa. At this meeting, it was announced that $1 million will be added to their budget recommendation for mental health services, and this will be divided amongst the other universities in Iowa. And then voter registration, today is National Voter Registration Day, and undergraduate student government has partnered with other campus partners to have a voting registration table event, and to get more students registered for the November elections. And then we just had the undergraduate student government finishing our competitive fall nominations process for senators. We had over 90 candidates apply and a lot of qualified candidates. But we ended up with 14 new senators, who we welcome to USG, and can't wait to see what they'll do.
Additionally, the IMU is going to be going through major renovations within the next few years. So they're currently in the planning stages now, following the project's approval. It's estimated that it will cost around $81.1 million to make, to expand the IMU into both Hubbard Park, as well as based in the area that it is now. If Counsel would like to contribute to the feedback of the project, now would be a really great time, and we can share contacts. Additionally, programs that are based out of the IMU House Hotel, such as the LEAST Gap program that we did this past year, will hopefully be moved and relocated to be hosted by private hotels in the Iowa City area. And, yeah, the IMU House Hotel will be shutting down sadly. But finally, we hope to still present the results of this year's Renner Guide. But finally, we hope to still present the results of this year's Renner's Guide at an upcoming session. We had some really great results, like, over way more than we had received in the past, and a very diverse group of students that responded. So the analysis is going to be really interesting, I can imagine. So, yeah. And this is also my last meeting. And it has sincerely been an honor to get to work with you all, and I hope to continue to in the future with my own research, as well as just in general, being involved with the Iowa City community has been such an uplifting experience. And it's tragic to leave early, but I'm excited to see, like, for future plans and stuff like that. So thank you for everything.
Well, we certainly want to thank you. I think you've been with us since fall of 2020.
Yeah, I think so, actually, yeah.
Yes. Fall of 2020. So, on behalf of the City of Iowa City, I want to present you with the certificate of appreciation to Elizabeth for thoughtful contributions during the 2021 through 2022 year of service as the City Council Liaison and Alternate Liaison from the University of Iowa undergraduate student government, USG, and for demonstrating commitment to student participation on this 20th day of September 2022. So, if you don't mind coming up here and getting this.
Thank you.
Really appreciate the USG and the city connection here.
Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You're all in my college.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Awesome. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll save updates and all that stuff for the end of our formal meeting. So we will be adjourned until 6:00 PM. All right, we're going to call this meeting to order for the City of Iowa City Council meeting on September 20th, 2022. It is just 6 o'clock, and I'm going to call it to order. Road call, please.
Alter.
Here.
Durgus.
Here.
Harmson.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Weiner.
Here.
All right, well, welcome everyone to your City Hall. Super excited that you're here today. We are on to item number two, which is Proclamations 2A as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and this will be read by Mayor Protem Alter.
Whereas domestic violence, dating violence, and stalking affects women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds, causing long-term physical, psychological, and emotional harm; and whereas one in three Americans have witnessed an incident of domestic violence; and whereas children who experience domestic violence are at a higher risk for failure in school, mental illness, substance abuse, suicide, and may choose violence as a way to solve problems later in life; and whereas domestic violence in rural communities exists as a hidden, silent, and often unrecognized crime that is often underreported; and whereas through the inspiration, courage, and persistence of victims of domestic violence, their children, and advocates, our communities are learning to recognize the impact of violence in the home and intimate relationships; and whereas the Domestic Violence Intervention Program has worked to end violence in intimate relationships for more than 40 years through the collaborative partnerships of advocates, volunteers, local municipalities, criminal justice, health and human services, faith communities, business leaders, and private citizens; and whereas our community's achievements should be commended and we must continue our commitment to respect and support victims of domestic violence and to prevent future violence in our community. Now, therefore, I, Megan Alter, Mayor Protem, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2022 to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Iowa, Iowa City, and urge all community members to work together to eliminate domestic violence, dating violence, and stalking from our community. And here to accept is Kristi Dozer with DVIP.
We have a couple minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Excellent.
Please.
I'm Kristi Dozer. I'm with the Domestic Violence Intervention Program, and I want to introduce a colleague of mine, Caroline. We are here to talk a little bit about October Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I've got some stuff that they're passing forward, thank you. DVIP, I mean, I've gotten the honor and pleasure of talking with so many of you about victim services in Johnson County and specifically in Iowa City. And I want to take a minute just to say thank you again. I've worked in this field now, the white hair, if that doesn't date me, I don't know what does, but I've worked in this field since the middle 80s and have had the honor to work with so many amazing people across the state. And one of the things I know to be true is that the community of Iowa City and Johnson County are truly, truly supporters of victims of domestic violence. The support that you give us, both fiscally, but much more importantly, through your words and efforts, really do send a message across not only our community, but across the entire state about what's needed for victim survivors. You've heard me say this before, what would it take to keep you safe from the one person that knows everything about you? What would that look like? How challenging would that be? How terrifying would that be? And we want you to know how much we appreciate your support and how much your efforts have an impact. This last year, we saw another increase in the services that we provided, a little over 10%. We served a little over 2,400 adults and youth in our eight-county service area. In Johnson County, specifically, and in Iowa City, Iowa City, we served a little over 1,000 individuals, and in Johnson County, we served a total of 1,486. And so I don't have the numbers memorized yet, it's too soon. We just finished up in July. So what I want you to know is that these numbers unfortunately are not going down. The resources for victims of domestic violence need to remain constant and improve. Obviously, we're struggling with the same things that families are in general, the increase in costs, the increase in wait times for resources, and just finding the safety and dignity that victims deserve. And so I just wanted to say thank you. And I really want to find out if you have questions, because you guys have heard me talk lots. because you guys have heard me talk lots, so.
Well, what I'll tell you is, we really appreciate you being here today and all of the work that you all do at DVIP. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great. All righty. Since we received materials, could I get a motion to receive correspondence?
I'll move Taylor.
Second.
Weiner.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed, a seven to zero. We are at proclamation 2B, National Hispanic Heritage Month, and this is, it says, "Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is an opportunity to recognize the contributions of Hispanic Americans and to celebrate Hispanic heritage and culture. And whereas each year, the federal government and local governments observe National Hispanic Heritage Month as the period from September 15th to October 15th by recognizing and celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens who ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas September 15th is significant as a starting date for Hispanic Heritage Month because it is the anniversary of Independence Day for the Latin American communities, Latin American countries of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence on September 16th and September 18th respectfully. And whereas Latinx have made innumerable contributions to the Iowa City community, and it is important the city recognize and celebrate the diverse histories and cultures of the Latinx population, and whereas the Latinx community is integral to our city with business owners and residents alike who are proud to be a part of the Latinx community but hope for greater visibility, recognition, and representation. And whereas the City of Iowa City continually strive to foster mutual understanding and respect among all persons, and whereas this observance affords special opportunities to become more knowledgeable about Hispanic heritage and to honor the many Hispanics who have contributed to the progress of Iowa City, the state, and the nation, now therefore I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim September 15th, 2022 through October 15th, 2022 to be National Hispanic Heritage Month. And to receive this is going to be Marcella, Elizabeth, and Manny.
I live in Iowa City. I'm from Mexico, and this is a big step for the community Hispanic. Only say thank you very much.
My name is Marcela Orzado. My name is Marcela Orzado. I live in Iowa City, and I am from Mexico, and this is a big step for the Latino community, and all I want to say is thank you so much.
Great, great.
My name is Elizabeth, and I just want to say I'm agreeing with Marcella. This is huge for us to be a proclamation in Iowa City. We're learning too much from each other, so thank you so much for today. Just come and celebrate our culture with us, please. Thank you.
Great, yeah.
I literally just made it. I just want to say that I'm so happy for this proclamation that it has aligned with the Johnson County. So Johnson County also put out a proclamation, and at the state level, the governor also put out a proclamation. We just had, I think that this year we had the most highest outcome in just participation throughout Latino festivals across the state of Iowa as well, so that's growing. So all of these things come together just to show you that the population here is getting rooted, it's not going anywhere, and it's just a beautiful way to show the past, current, and future contributions of the Latino people in the state of Iowa, and it's just a very beautiful thing. It's also nothing that is new. I do want to say that here at the University of Iowa, at the Archives, there's a beautiful collection called Migration is Beautiful, and they did the great job of finding many families across the state of Iowa who have roots here for, we're talking over 100 years, and documentation, curating all this information about experiences of Latinos in the state of Iowa for a really long time. So you all should check that out, it's a beautiful thing, and I'm just very happy that all of this has been coinciding this year.
Great, thank you all.
I just want to say something to my friends. My name is Benny Alvarez. I want to say thank you to the city, to the people that lives in this city. As always I say, like Iowa City can be an example for the rest of the state. They mentioned it was important that, we know, like we have been here in Iowa for more than 100 years, and this is, I would say like the second time, like we received this recognition in public, and that is a motivation to keep working for everybody in the Johnson County and Iowa City as well. And the most important, we are the majority minority, the biggest minority, but we are the most underrepresented in the Johnson County, so we have many things to work together. I think like when we work for the Latino community, we are working for the city and we're working for the Johnson County and for the state, and we are so proud to be this, from this process and the history of the state of Iowa. Thank you.
Thank you all. All right, we're going to move on to our consent agenda, which is items three through seven. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move Taylor.
Second.
Weiner.
Move by Taylor, seconded by Weiner. Anyone from the public like to address any item that is on the consent agenda? And is there anyone that wants to comment on item 6D, the Lake Shore Drive Traffic Calming? Seeing no one. Counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Yes.
Bergus.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Motion passed, a seven to zero. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence for item 6D?
So move Bergus.
Second. Taylor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed, a seven to zero. We are on to item number eight, which is our community comment. I'll open up the community comment for three minutes up until 7:00 PM at the latest, but we'll end before that if we get through all the commenters. If you're online, I'll ask that you raise your hand and I'll acknowledge you. In person, there is a sign-up sheet that you can do a sticker at the back, and also a sign-up at the desk if you want to write your name, but there is a basket for you to put your sticker in. And I'm going to welcome our first commenter. It's been a while, welcome.
Hey, thank you for having public speak. Appreciate the work we've done with, with our people who have come over from Central and South America. I do want to bring up that the U.S. has accepted, well, the U.S. has accepted only 127 refugees from Afghanistan out of 65,000 or so applications, which I think is something we can do better on, and something, I don't know if the city has any, any say or can do anything in this, but it's a good thing to mention.
Will you mention your name and the city where you live, please?
Yeah, Brandon Ross. I live in Iowa City.
Thank you.
I would also like to bring up that according to the doomsday clock people, we're only a minute away from doomsday, according to nuclear danger from nuclear war. And that one of the reasons that we're in this, or the reason why we're in this, is because the United States and Russia are in a proxy war using Ukraine as their playground to do this. I would like to say that, that in Ukraine, about a third of the people in Ukraine are Russian, a third of the Ukrainians are also pro-Russian, and the two-thirds of the remaining Ukrainians are not anti-Russian. This is important to remember. There is a group that's anti-Russian, but it's, it's a right-wing nationalist group in the west of Ukraine. This group was supported by the United States in 2014 at the beginning of the civil war in Ukraine, over which period about 20,000 people died from 2014 to 2022 when Russia I think it's important, if you want to save, if we want to save lives, not only Afghans and people in the world otherwise, but we want to reduce the danger from the nuclear doomsday clock, that we should be on the phone and writing emails to our congresspeople in the White House to please stop saying that negotiations are off the table. Please negotiate and pull out the arms from Ukraine.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address a topic that is not on our agenda? Welcome, please state your name and the city you're from.
My name is Joseph Purdy. I'm from Williamsburg, Iowa, but I am from here, 1978. I'm in Williamsburg to take care of my sickly mom. Anyway, I just want to say how wonderful it is to be here at this grand little pulpit here, and it's really funny, when I was a boy, I wanted hair like other people. You know, I didn't like my hair. I wanted hair that was soft and wavy and laid down, and someone told me recently, you know, I got just as beautiful hair as anybody else. Y'all touch your hair, you know? Feel your hair. There ain't nothing wrong with your hair. Your hair is just as beautiful as any person on this planet, born or unborn. And I love all you people, I love every single one of you. All you immigrants coming to my hometown, welcome to America, and I hope that you can enjoy the civil rights that I grew up with. When I come back here 30, 40 years later, I see a bunch of skyscrapers going up in the sky, a bunch of glass going around. So what's going on here? Well, I don't know what's going on here, but there's got to be a better way, a more peaceful way. I would like to be back in the farmer's market. I'm getting segregated from the people that I love. I am a local, and I love all the local people, and I want to show them the beauty of my cabinetry, my carpentry. I don't think it's right to be segregating me from the people I love. It's not cool. So let's all just put your computers away, put your phones away, put your UNESCO computer away, and let's start speaking from the heart. What's going to be the best for our local people, our love, our local people who love all these immigrants coming from everywhere else? I want you to enjoy America, I want you to enjoy the civil rights and the freedoms that we have, I want you to enjoy the Constitution of the United States of America. I want you all to enjoy the gifts that I have received, not from Iowa City. Iowa City's been rather rough on me my whole life. But, you know, let's all just get together and let's put away your phones and forget about UNESCO for a while, and let's think about Iowa City, how we can love each other and improve each other. I go downtown, I'm in my, my south side neighborhood, I see black, white, Puerto Rican, Hispanic, Chinese, and the ones that know me. What's up, Joe? Hey, man, what's up, bro? I love you too, man. All right, let's all be peaceful. I got a carving for you. It says peace on it. I can do it in Arabic, too.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address a topic that is not on our agenda? Seeing no one present or online. I'm going to go to item number nine, which is 9A, rezoning Cardinal Heights. Ordinances conditionally rezon in approximately 27.68 acres of property located east of Camp Cardinal Boulevard and west of Camp Cardinal Road from interim development. Research Park zone to low-density multifamily zone with a planned development overlay. This is second consideration. Could I get a motion to give second consideration, please?
So moved Bergus.
Second. Alter.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please come forth. Seeing no one, counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Bergus.
Yes.
I'm sorry, one second before we start that.
Discuss our opinion on this now?
Yes, this is counsel discussion.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right, yes, please. Counsel discussion.
Sorry to interrupt, Mayor, but I just had a few things to say, and especially since I was in the negative, the only negative with the previous vote, I want to thank the city staff and the staff of Navigate and the many community members that we, that have taken the time to express their thoughts on this development. And first, I will say that I am in favor of growth and development, but the question is, at what cost should this come? And I'm not referring to monetary, but primarily its effect on the surrounding environment. And we as a city have continually prioritized our science in protecting the environment and woodlands, so this particular rezoning request is kind of confusing to me as a council person. This development does check a lot of the boxes as far as the requirements, and looks to be a nice development. I like the fact that there is a variety, a nice mix of housing types that blend in with the surrounding neighborhoods. However, it's generated a lot of concerns for me, and as council members, we should keep in mind any comments that come from our community members when making decisions. A number of concerns were raised by neighboring community members, and it wasn't just on NIMBY, they had some very valid concerns, including possible erosion as far as along the creek line there, stormwater drainage and runoff, destruction of the woodlands, sensitive areas and slopes, and protection of endangered species. Specifically, there was some note in there about Indiana bat that was mentioned in question at some point in time, and I didn't see any further information on that as far as where we are with, with that. Other concerns that came to me included the fact that this area is not serviced by public transportation, and the information provided, the project is referred to as walkable, and of course, it is in line with many nearby trails, but not such things as groceries and retail centers or banks. The term affordable came up a few times in the information, and this, being a West Sider, I'm very well aware that this section of the west side of Iowa City is not known for affordability, so I'm not sure what population they are intending for this development. I question if we're in such crucial need of new development that we have to squeeze in developments into every piece of existing green space and growth of trees that we have in the area. Why can't we balance somehow the need for increased housing with environmental protection? So I would ask the developer and my fellow council members to consider these things before proceeding with approval for this development. That's all, sorry.
No worries. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Bergus.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
No.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Motion passes six to one. Item number 9B is rezon in 518 Bowery Street. Ordinances conditionally rezon in approximately 1,470 square feet, a property located at 518 Bowery Street from high-density multifamily residential zone with a historic district overlay to neighborhood commercial zone with a historic district overlay. Staff has requested expedited action. Could I get a motion, please?
I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to finally be passed, be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second. Taylor.
Move by Weiner, seconded by Taylor. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? And I see no one online. Counsel discussion.
I just reiterate that I love seeing that this historic building is going to get a life as a coffee shop in an area where there's a lot of students and... a life as a coffee shop in an area where there's a lot of students and there are no coffee shops nearby, and so I think this is going to be really welcome. And, you know, it just seems the perfect fit for the area and the size of the building. So I'm excited to see what happens.
Diddle, diddle. All right. Roll call, please.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, Weiner. Second, Taylor.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Thomas. Roll call.
Taylor.
Oh, Taylor. All right. Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. We are on to item number 9C, which is Monument Hills Preliminary Platte and Preliminary Sensitive Areas Development Plan. This is a resolution approving the preliminary platte and preliminary, preliminary Sensitive Areas Development Plan of the Monument Hills subdivision Iowa City, Iowa. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Thomas.
Second, alter.
All right, and we're going to welcome Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Danielle Sitzman, Neighborhood and Development Services. As you introduced tonight, this is an application for preliminary platte on behalf of Monument Farms LLC and Joe Clark of Monument Hills LLC, requesting preliminary platte for approximately 70 acres just west of Scott Boulevard and north of Rochester Avenue. This would facilitate the eventual construction of 64 single-family detached residences, 12 senior single-family units, three duplexes, and 29-unit senior multifamily apartment shown here bounded in the white outline. Just for reference, this is an exhibit from the rezoning, kind of showing the existing neighborhood. As I mentioned, this particular lot's ownership just bounded to the north is the Harvest Preserve ownership and an existing subdivision to the west off of Large Lane, and as well as some recent development along Tamrec Ridge that you may be familiar with. This shows the rezoning action that was recently approved for the rezoning to low-density single-family with the OPD or planned development overlay on it. This occurred in two different actions or two different blends of zoning because part of this area was being preserved as the interim development zone that it already was, just overlaying the OPD over on top of it. That was to accommodate an existing communications tower. So there was an OPD rezoning, including a preliminary Sensitive Areas Development Plan for these areas. This is the platte that's under consideration tonight, and just to orient a little bit, you can see the extension of new public streets off of Rochester and a loop, several loops off of those. There is also a private street loop on the northeast, well, I guess southeast corner of this development to facilitate the senior housing, the mix of housing types that I mentioned. There are some lots being preserved, as I mentioned, for an existing communications tower as well as an existing home off of Rochester. There's also a trail connection on the northwest corner of this platte to Calder Park, and then some right-of-way dedication happening at the intersection of Scott Boulevard and There is an outlot E included in this platte that was not discussed much with the rezoning since it was not subject to the rezoning, but it is part of this plating. It is where the trail connects to Calder Park. There are sensitive areas included in this area as well, so there's a revised preliminary Sensitive Areas Development Plan tonight. As part of a subdivision review, we look at several criteria, including the comprehensive plan, as well as any conditions that might have been attached to the previous rezoning action, and then a review of subdivision code standards. So in regards to applicability to the comprehensive plan, as was discussed at the rezoning, this area of, the city is identified as appropriate for conservation design. Developments with a conservation design should be more compact with less pavement overall and therefore preserving more open space than a conventional development. The project area is approximately 65 to 70 acres, half of which will remain undeveloped with conservation easements over them to preserve and protect those sensitive features. Therefore, it's consistent with our comprehensive plan in general. And then also a review of the northeast district plan, which is also in place in this area. The proposed development generally aligns with that as well, which includes primarily single-family development, concentrating more intense development at the corners of major intersections. As far as rezonings that were included, or conditions that were included in the rezoning, all of the ones that can be satisfied at this stage are essentially, they all need to be completed with final platte, but we're tracking those as we go through. They have to do with dedication of trail easements and public right-of-way, also incorporating traffic calming that's been shown. So as we check the preliminary platte, we can see they're anticipating those dedications and leaving room for traffic calming. The criteria that we look at for preliminary platte standard, subdivision standards, I'll just go through this briefly. As I mentioned, there are some public streets and private streets being developed as well as a trail. There's traffic calming involved in this platte as well, where the block length is a little bit longer than we would desire it to be. So overall, this development encourages an interconnection of sidewalks and facilitates traffic calming. In regard to open space, they are required to dedicate or do fee and lieu for a certain amount of public open space or parkland based on the overall size of the development. In this case, it's just over 1.38 acres of land that would need to either be dedicated or have a fee and lieu payment made. In this case, the applicant is required to pay a fee and lieu since they have not chosen to include a parkland dedication. We had preferred originally that the outlot E be a parkland dedication. They declined to pursue that and in fact transferred the ownership to Harvest Preserve instead. So we have required the trail connection, but that doesn't satisfy their open space requirements. So they will still have to do a fee and lieu. As far as utilities, there are adequate utilities available. They've made a plan for stormwater collection as well. So essentially, preliminary platte satisfies the required subdivision requirements. So in the development steps highlighted in green is the stage that we are here tonight. Previously, the rezoning was accomplished for that set of rezonings. They will need to follow this up with a final platte and then an update or final version of the Sensitive Areas Development Plan with a site plan or final platte, and then building permits. They did hold a good neighbor meeting previously with the rezoning. So based on a review of the relevant criteria and subdivision code, staff did recommend approval with no additional conditions. As I mentioned, they held that good neighbor meeting previously, and at September 7th, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's opinion and also voted to recommend. I'm happy to answer questions.
Do you have any idea how much the fee and lieu will be?
It's based on assessed value, so no, I don't. We wouldn't take a look at that based on the acreage that's required.
I know that this is not part of the specific, but that, at that four-way, is that going to also be affected? Is it going, I know that there are roundabouts planned along, or in place along Scott, and it seems like that, especially with this new development, is that something that is in the works, if I'm remembering?
Sure. The amount of right-of-way that we require to be dedicated at that corner could accommodate a roundabout in the future. So that was part of our analysis of what this may trigger. It's not required to be installed, though, with this development.
Any thoughts on the schedule for the senior housing in the corner?
No, I mean, that would be under a separate developer. So the sale of that lot, the finalization of that sale of that lot, and their eventual site plan review would, you know, need to happen before we could tell you when that might be. They have some steps to accomplish first, but no, they haven't given us a schedule.
Thank you. Anyone from the public like to, or we do have the development team, do they have any comments that they want to add?
Good evening. Mike Welch, Welch Design and Development, on behalf of the applicant. Also, Tracy from Ewing Development is here, too, and so she can probably speak a little bit to those questions about the timing of the senior component on the corner. I just wanted to kind of just do a quick highlight for you, just a reminder. The preliminary platte you see tonight is almost identical to the concept plan that we submitted with rezoning. I think the things that have changed has been a little bit more detail on the trail and the alignment for that trail connection to Calder Park. Just a couple of things probably to highlight, then, just based on other comments that we've received in the past. I guess that good neighbor meeting that we did hold, if you remember, we had some additional lots on Rochester Avenue. That as a result of feedback from the neighbors, we removed those from the development. So I do, I think that's just an important piece to remember, that it was a very collaborative effort with the surrounding neighbors. And then the other piece to mention is that outlot B that's in conservation, that's kind of along Rochester Avenue, that's being preserved, and that is that area that was identified as kind of that, what I'd call like old-growth woodlands, where it's been there for, you know, 100 years plus, and so we are preserving and keeping that set aside in addition to meeting code requirements for woodland preservation and all the other sensitive features that we have. And then just a quick update on where we're at design-wise. We are working through the permitting process with the DNR and Corps of Engineers for the sewer crossing Ralston Creek and the trail on Ralston Creek, and so working through those processes as this goes on, too. And then overall timing, pending approval of a preliminary platte, we're kind of ready to move in full to construction documents and then final platte, trying to get this going as soon as possible within those requirements. So if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer those, or like I said, I know Tracy can talk to you a little bit about Ewing's specific piece.
Hi, my name is Tracy Anderson. I'm from Ewing Development, also vintage cooperatives. So we have 11 established cooperative communities in the state of Iowa, and we have five more under construction in Iowa and Missouri. Three of those are in Johnson County, Corvale, Iowa City, and North Liberty. So they've been very successful, and we look forward to hopefully a fourth location. Senior cooperatives are member-owned and member-governed. Our member owners are like-minded persons that are looking for, to spend their finer years in locations with access to arts and culture, excellent healthcare, and Iowa City is a perfect fit for that. Vintage cooperatives are unique because we excel at building communities, we offer personalized homes, and we always deliver a unique and individualized customer experience. So The Borough, our project that we are proposing for Iowa City, will be the first of this product for vintage cooperatives that has a choice of three different home styles. So we have our estate homes, which are patio homes. We have our suites, which are condo-style homes, and then the villas, which are the town, or twin homes. All in one location, there are several amenities and common areas, including a pickle wall court and pool and fitness center. So our communities are maintenance-free, and they come with professional and experienced And on behalf of Ewing Development, I thank you for your consideration, and I welcome your questions about our community.
You mentioned that there's one, there are three existing, and that there is already one in Iowa City. What's its name?
That is Vintage Cooperative of Iowa City. That is a three-story building on Foster Road. Okay.
Yes. All righty. Any other questions for staff or the developers? All right, going to open this up to the public. Anyone want to address this topic? There is no one online, and there is no one present. Council discussion.
Looks like what we were presented with before.
Solid.
I do appreciate the effort made in terms of both communicating and relating the project to the larger context, you know, with the trail leading off toward Hickory Hill Trail, and the reference, not in this presentation, but the last one, to the comprehensive plan and the overlay, which showed the relationship between the proposal and our comprehensive plan. So thank you for that.
And I think listening to the community and making some adjustments is also good. So, all right. Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 10 is fiscal year 2023 budget amendment, public hearing. Resolution amending the current budget for fiscal year ending June 2023. I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'm going to welcome Nicole, our finance director.
If I can find the presentation there. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Like Mayor said, Nicole Davies, Finance Director, and I'm here to just briefly go over our first budget amendment for FY '23. Just to have background, this is a budget that we just approved in March of 2022. It runs from July 1 of '22 to June 30 of 2023. Our policy allows for amendments in the following situations: emergent situations, transfers from contingency funds, expenditures that have offsetting revenues or using fund balance, and then carryover of prior-year budget authority. This first amendment is almost entirely carryover of prior-year budget authority, which is typically what this first budget amendment is. We can amend anytime other than the last 30 days of the fiscal year. We've typically, we'll run three budget amendments, one about this time every year of mostly carryovers. Then we'll amend, we'll have our second amendment along with the operating budget for the next fiscal year in March, and then we typically have a third amendment in May. So like I said, the next planned amendment will be in March. The carryforwards, those requests are submitted by the departments, they're reviewed by the city manager's office and also the finance department. Our budget policy states that they must be at least $5,000 or 1% of that division's budget. We have a lot of capital improvement project budget carryforwards, and that, again, is what makes up the majority of this budget amendment. And the CIPs, they tend to align more with the calendar year, and we have a lot of multi-year projects. And then there's some other miscellaneous small amendments. Just to give the highlights of the revenues, intergovernmental revenues, a little over 11 million, that's, again, mostly state and federal grants that are for our CIP. The other financing sources, that's mostly sales for the university and South District homes. And then the miscellaneous of 240 is contributions, again, for those CIP. The expenditures, the governmental capital projects is the largest at 36 million. A few of those major CIP projects, the Melrose Avenue improvements, the Benton Street rehab, and then, too, the senior center building improvements. With the business-type enterprise, that's about 17 million. The two major projects there are the automated parking equipment and then the annual sewer projects. And then the community and economic development of about 21 million, that's mostly the ARPA carryforward for those funds to still be used. So again, first budget amendment, the overall impact to the fund balance is a decrease of about 65 million, and that's covered through excess fund balance and bonds for those projects. And this does not affect the property tax levies.
Can I get a quick 5 million?
Any questions?
All right, hearing no questions. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? I see no one online. Anyone present? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Harmson.
Second, Taylor.
All right, council discussion.
It's just actually really helpful to understand what it is, why we're doing the amendment right now, and have those sort of three different processes outlined.
Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 11 is 2022 Traffic Restriping. Resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the 2022 Traffic Restriping Project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing and welcome Ethan.
Hi, my name's Ethan. I'm a civil engineer with the city of Iowa City. So the 2022 Traffic Restriping Project, we're going to be doing Market Street and Jefferson Street. Market Street's going to be from Madison Street to Rochester Avenue, and will be included buffered bike lanes. Jefferson Street is going to be Clinton Street to Evans Street with a buffered bike lane. Keokuk Street is Sandusky Drive to Highway 6, and that will be just a bike lane with no buffer. Southgate Ave will be from South Gilbert Street to Keokuk Street with a buffered bike lane. Keokuk Street with a buffered bike lane. The estimate for this project is $90,000. The bid letting is on October 11. The award date is planned for October 18 with a start date of October 31 and completion expected to be in the spring of 2023. Are there any questions?
No questions. Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? I see no one online. Anyone present? Seeing no one. I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Weiner. Second, Burgess.
Council discussion?
Well, a couple of these projects, Jefferson and Market have bike lanes, and this project will buffer them. They're not currently buffered, as I recall. So we are making an adjustment there to the, you know, that has a safety advantage, and I'm happy to see that.
And as a frequent now bike lane user, I can say that 1.5 feet of buffer makes a huge difference in comfort and safety. So it's a good move.
Good. Roll call, please.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item 12, American Legion Road Speed Limit. Ordinance amending Title IX and Title Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Chapter III and Title Rules of the Road, Section VI and Title Speed Restriction, Subsection B and Title Exceptions to Eliminate the 35 mile per hour speed zone for American Legion Road. Can I get a motion for first consideration?
So moved, Thomas.
Second, Weiner.
Alright, we're going to welcome our staff. Jason?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jason Havel, City Engineer. Just going to give you a little bit of background information about the speed limit change item in front of you. On the construction side of things, we're working through the American Legion Road reconstruction project. We're currently on Phase Two, which goes from Buckingham Lane to Taft Avenue. Currently, we are focused on the west end of the project and hoping to have the first section open probably mid-October. So that would go from Buckingham Lane to Barrington Road. And then the remaining section, we're hoping to have open yet this year, depending on weather and contractor progress. It may be this year or spill over into the spring. But you may remember, as part of the design process, we were going through and for the reconstruction of American Legion Road, going from an urban, or sorry, from a rural cross section. So that'd be a roadway with drainage ditches and converting that to an urban multimodal corridor, which would include design elements such as narrowed travel lanes, on-street bicycle facilities, sidewalks, that kind of stuff. As part of that, we also implemented a 25 mile an hour design speed as part of that design. So the item in front of you is kind of the last step in that process. So that will change the speed limit on this section of American Legion Road from 35 miles an hour to 25 miles per hour. The thought is that it would change from, you know, again, from that rural cross section, the 25 mile an hour would better reflect the new urban multimodal cross section that we'll have with the new construction. This is similar to what was done for Phase One of the project, which was west of here from roughly Scott Boulevard to Buckingham Lane. And as far as timing goes, this will allow us, as we open up these sections, to have that 25 mile an hour speed limit in place as those open up. So with that, happy to take any questions.
I have a couple. So Jason, is this the same profile as I see on Foster Road in terms of the cross section?
I don't believe so. I think if I remember correctly, I thought Foster Road maybe had 11-foot lanes, and this is 10-foot lanes.
Uh huh.
Foster Road used to be beautiful.
So it's 10-foot lanes, and then the buffered bike lanes?
It'll be buffered bike lanes.
Are there, are there street trees between the sidewalk and the?
Flowers and butterflies between?
Correct. The intent would be to have street trees and sidewalks.
You guys wrecked it back then. Put a freeway from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alright, we're going to open this up for public discussion. Anyone want to, from the public want to address this topic? I see no one online. Anyone present? Seeing no one. Counsel discussion?
It's going to be nice having more and more of that road opening up.
Absolutely. Roll call, please.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item 13 is Shelter House Street Outreach Agreement. Resolution approving an agreement with Shelter.
Seven to zero on what? What happened?
Please do not speak out when it is not public comment time. Alright, we are at item number 13, which is Shelter House Street Outreach Agreement. Resolution approving an agreement with Shelter House for Street Outreach Services. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Burgess. Second, Weiner.
Alright, and we're going to welcome any staff comments at this time.
Mayor Captain Denise Brotherton from Iowa City Police Department is going to start us off on this item.
Awesome. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Denise Brotherton with the Iowa City Police Department. It's been a while since I've been up here, but excited to be here to talk about street outreach. It's been in existence for a year, and we are excited to see the continuation of this position. We still often deal with these situations, but we have short-term solutions as the police department. And as our officers try to provide resources and referrals, we still miss that second element of that follow-up and that relationship building. And that's what we see street outreach doing and supporting us in providing a safe environment for everyone in our community, whether they're housed or unhoused. And we just believe that the continuation of this position and this partnership with Shelter House will continue to serve and protect those most vulnerable citizens, our community members in our, in our city.
Great. Thank you. Any questions?
Mayor, we also have Chrissy King and Ellie from the Shelter House that was going to provide some background on this item for council as well.
Awesome. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Teague and council members. Thank you for your consideration of this request to continue street outreach in Iowa City for another three years. While the partnership began in February of 2021, street outreach services did not begin until April of 2021. Since that time, we've engaged 155 individuals, 17 of whom were children under 18. The Street Outreach Specialist meets with individuals everywhere from parks and individual encampments, to the free lunch program and other area providers, to downtown and around town. Referrals are made by the Iowa City Police, other municipal departments, area partner organizations, and private community members. Individuals served or provided survival items, including tents, water, food, first aid supplies, sleeping bags, and cold weather gear. Support is offered with local service navigation, mental health and emotional support, transportation, and assistance with applying for, in applying for and securing mainstream benefits. And finally, when chosen, housing searches and placements. The Street Outreach Specialist regularly works with individuals who are known to use opioids and have friends who have, who use, supplying Narcan and training on how to administer it so as to prevent overdoses. Shelter House works to ensure access to clean needles and provides Sharp containers. Our initial goal is to build trust and engagement with folks who are otherwise not necessarily connected to care. Since April of last year, 84 individuals have been permanently housed and are successfully retaining their housing. Many individuals moved directly from the streets of our community into a home. Decades of homelessness ended. Through our collaborative approach, we focus on reducing calls for service to the police and have together avoided a myriad of charges ranging from public intox to trespassing. Many thanks to City Manager Fruin, Chief Liston, Sergeant McKnight, and Captain Brotherton, and the staff in Public Works and Park Departments, whom we work with closely to address the needs of unsheltered individuals and families in our community. The past year has been quite a journey. We've learned, we've leaned in and learned from one another. As with any new initiative involving cross-sector partnerships, we didn't always see eye to eye. We faced challenges, had animated conversations, made some missteps, and worked to repair and course correct. We identified a common ground, those in need of housing and care, the interest and desire to improve public health and safety, the understanding that housing is essential for health and essential for safety for the individual, and that all people are housing-ready. Because of this, we have a street outreach model in which other communities across the state look to replicate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Not to dig, I'm sorry, not to dig too deep, but what were some of just the challenges? Since this is a new program, you mentioned some of the collaboration, but I'm just kind of curious, yeah, just what were some of the challenges?
I'm trying to play with your phone, Jeffrey.
Yeah, largely where Iowa City Police begin and end, and Shelter House Street Outreach can begin and end, and that transfer and transition, where we can prevent situations from escalating, where we work together to make appropriate referrals. So it's really navigating that relationship. Thanks. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, anyone from the public like to address this topic? I see no one online. Anyone present? Seeing no one. Counsel discussion?
I think this is an amazing and important first step. I'm so glad that it's extended, and I can't wait to see, as it matures, how the collaboration continues. And already, the fact of as many people being helped and 84 permanently housed already is truly amazing. And I can't wait to see how this program flourishes. And yeah, it's amazing, amazing to hear in one year's time, two years' time, how long, how quickly you've gotten your feet on the ground and have really stretched out into the community and clearly have gained trust to be able to help people. Because I know that that's oftentimes an important first step, is that there's a lack of trust to do that. So just awesome.
I think the ability and willingness to have those hard conversations and the, and the sort of animated conversations and figure out where the boundaries lie, and the commitment on, on the part of, of everyone to do that is really key to the success of this. Not just to sort of say, well, I'm right and you're wrong, but to, to work together to resolve that piece. That's really important.
Meeting people where they are is what comes to mind when I hear about this. And the reaching out by the Shelter House and all of the other partners, I think is significant because it really does offer people information, resources, and what I would really call it is hope. And so thanks for providing this program.
Agreed.
Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 14, the South District SMID Operating Agreement. Resolution authorizing the mayor to sign and the city clerk to attest an operating agreement between the city of Iowa City and the South District Self-Supervised Municipal Improvement District. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Alter. Second, Taylor.
Alright, moved by Alter, seconded by Taylor, and we're going to welcome staff Wendy Ford.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm Wendy Ford, Economic Development Coordinator. This is the final step in establishing the South District Self-Supervised Municipal Improvement District, easier said as a SMID district. And this is to adopt an operating agreement which outlines two things. One, how the SMID will carry out its work in accordance with a petition that called for the formation of the SMID. And two, how the city will distribute the SMID property tax revenues to the organization. As you recall, last December '21, the SMID was created by ordinance, and it allowed for the collection of an additional tax assessment on the properties within the established area, which is generally surrounding and including the Pepperwood Plaza. An exact reflection of the petition of property owners to establish the SMID, the operating agreement memorializes the activities the SMID has committed to, which are for administrative and operational expenses of the district as defined and authorized by state law. A board is now established to run the nonprofit, and they have just announced the hiring of Angie Jordan as its executive director. And I could answer more questions if you like, but I'll leave it there unless you have any others.
No questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? We welcome and invite you up front to the, to the mic. I see no one online. I can sit here.
Good evening, Council. My name's Katie Gerlock. I'm the Director of Better Together 2030. And I'm here on behalf of the South District SMID Board to thank you for voting in favor of this operating agreement and taking this last important step. I'll be here later, hopefully this fall, to talk about the Better Together All-In Vision Plan. But as you all know, the South District SMID is probably one of the best examples of where our community wants to go over the next seven years. Authentic, vibrant neighborhoods that are, you know, leverage the assets that are unique to each commercial node. But also, as you heard today in the work session, inclusive economic development and how important that is. And the South District SMID will be an incredible leader in that front. So we hope that you'll support it and look forward to taking the next steps.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments? Alright, council discussion?
Thank you, Wendy, for the information. And congratulations to the board for hiring Angie Jordan as their director. I couldn't even imagine a better person for that. She just has so much energy and enthusiasm and hope for the South District. She's just done some amazing things for the South District, and, and I'm excited for this. I'm excited for the SMID, and I'm excited to see Pepperwood Plaza grow and, and other areas in the South District. So, thank you.
Alright. Yeah, no, this is, oh, go right ahead.
I just was going to say, I'm just so, so excited to vote for this. I know how hard people have worked. I'm looking at you, Tasha. But no, this is just, it is a great freaking moment and a great accomplishment. And you guys deserve a huge round of applause for the amount of work that you've put in and just kept that vision and got there. So I'm so psyched to vote for you. Vote us in.
Here, here.
Here, here. This is, yeah, this is super exciting. I remember when this came before us. And this is that final piece. So I'll be in support of this tonight. And thanks to the board who also appointed Angie Jordan as the executive director. So super excited for that. If nothing else, roll call, please.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 15 is council appointments. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. 15A Housing and Community Development Commission. Housing and Community Development Commission one vacancy to fill and unexpired term effective upon appointment through June 30, 2025. And council discussion. And this is our only appointment tonight. The requirement is gender to be a male.
It sort of makes the choice for us, although fortunately also the applicant seems quite qualified.
Yes.
Yes.
That's Michael Eckhart.
Yep, we only had one applicant. Our people in majority in support?
Yes.
Alright. Alright, could I get a motion to appoint Michael Eckhart to the Housing and Community Development Commission?
So moved, Harmson.
Second, Weiner.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed at seven to zero. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Burgess.
Second, Alter.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passed at seven to zero. Any opposed? Motion passed at seven to zero. Item 16 is announcement of vacancies new. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Planning and zoning commission one vacancy to fill an unexpired term effective upon appointment through June 30, 2023. Applicants, application must be received by 5:00 p.m. Tuesday, October 25, 2022. Item number 17 is announcements of vacancies previous. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Ad hoc truth and reconciliation commission one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applications must be received by 5:00 p.m. Tuesday, September 27, 2022. Airport zoning board of adjustment one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Airport zoning commission Iowa City representative one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Historic preservation commission Jefferson Street one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. And we are at item number 18, which is city council information.
Can we also talk about?
Yes.
The meetings or whatever boards that we?
Absolutely.
We didn't.
Yes.
So I mean, there was a meeting of the Icade Board, which was a useful meeting. They are really showcasing some really exciting young entrepreneurs, as well as this, the whole ed tech project continues to, continues to be really productive. And then I just wanted to reference an event that a couple of us attended, which was the anniversary of Title IX Luncheon, which featured Coach Bluter as the speaker. And it was, it was a very, a well-attended festive event, but what really struck me was her message. What did sports bring to women? I'm not going to be able to recite everything she did, but essentially, it brought leadership, it brought teamwork, it brought the ability to work together, to be assertive, to rise to other levels in the community by dint of the work that the young women do together and learn together. And that has been a huge gift to our society.
Yes. All right. Other comments?
I'll just plug Climate Fest again, starting tomorrow, kickoff at Big Grove at 5:00 p.m. and activities go through the 24th. So look online at icgov.org for the Climate Fest festivities, which look great.
Don't forget to peacefully pick at the farmer's market Saturday from 7 to 9.
I have a?
That won't get beat up by Jeffrey's thug policeman.
I have a few. One, that was actually, it was wonderful. It was, the City of Literature had their annual board meeting actually down at the University of Iowa Library, where there is this wonderful exhibit on the history of the International Writers Program and Paul Engel. So it was amazing to have the meeting there and to be surrounded literally with the artifacts and to have the curators there walking us through. But it is, and it's a very small exhibit, but full of this amazing Iowa City literary history. So if anybody wants to go there, literally, you can go through as fast as you want, or you can sit and read every note, and it's really amazing. So that was a wonderful extra to a board meeting. Additionally, I actually got to sit in on a Zoom meeting with a lot of mayors from different municipalities on gun violence. And the chief speaker was actually the mayor of Highland Park. And so it was a very powerful message because she said that at the same time, and there was, I was just frantically taking notes, and so there are a lot of resources, including centers that have templates for resolutions and ordinances and to, you know, encourage us to work with our attorneys to find out what's possible and what isn't. But additionally, her message, to go along with what you were talking about, what are the takeaways? Her message is, we just cannot, sugarcoat this, that we have to talk about the horrific cost to people. And she said, this is also, quite starkly, she said, this is not a matter of if this happens to your community, it's a matter of when. And she said, when this happened to us, it was both a shock and a relief, and then a shock all over again, that there are these like immediate resources of when this happens to your community, here's what you do, mayor. So it was incredibly powerful, but it, and I know that we are actually working towards that as well here, to be more proactive about what we can do as a community to work with law enforcement. But it was very clear that it was like, this is not a law enforcement solution, it is a community solution. So at any rate, that was incredibly powerful. So I just wanted to pass that on.
Thank you. I'd like to add, Bill, briefly, that both the bivalent booster shots and flu shots are available. You should get them. I got one in each arm at the same day. I live to tell the tale.
I think we had a lot of talk tonight about young entrepreneurs, so probably should mention that it's going to be Kids Vendor Day at the farmer's market on Saturday morning. So always, it's always kind of a neat day to see all the different crafts and baked goods and all kinds of stuff out there with some of our young people in the community.
Friday and Saturday is Soul and Blues Fest, so I encourage people to go out and have a good time, soulful time. Next week, I believe it's Wednesday through Friday, I'll be in Waterloo at the Iowa City League of Cities. And that is always a great opportunity, not only to have discussions with other public servants that are mainly city councilors, but also opportunity to learn from others and bring some of that information back. So I'm excited about that opportunity. And then I'll just mention that next Thursday, the African-American Museum of Iowa is doing their History Maker Gala. And I'm super excited that our Iowa City's first Black mayor, Ross Wilburn, will be honored as a history maker, and I'll be attending that. So I'll go to Waterloo, come from Waterloo just to attend that and then go back to the conference. But I'm super excited to have him honored on that day.
I apologize for having to look this up, but I think you talked about mayors and somebody talked about the literature. On next Sunday, October 2, at 2:00 p.m. at the Prairie Light, hosted by Prairie Lights Bookstore, but it's at the Iowa City Public Library, will be a discussion of former Iowa City Mayor Jim Throgmorton's book, Co-Crafting the Just City: Tales from the Field by a Planning Scholar. And if you haven't seen his book or read any of his books, it's very interesting, and a lot of, a lot of us could relate to it, and some of the city staff also. So it should be a good event.
All right. If nothing else, we'll go to item number 19, which is report on items from city staff.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
All right. Another from our city manager's office, our city attorney?
Nothing for me either. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, our city clerk. All right. This is going to be tricky, but we're going to, item number 20 is, could I get a motion to adjourn? Before I do that, I'll just give a heads up as to what I plan to do. So we're going to adjourn from the formal meeting, and then we're going to go ahead and do roll call into our executive session and take a 10-minute break at that point, if people want a 10-minute break. And then we'll go on, and then we'll go into executive session, and then come back here after that to end. All right. So, number 20, could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Alter?
Second, Taylor.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned. All right.